So much stuff, all of a sudden.
Yes, there is. It's one of you can open the computer. I'll watch it up there.
Yes.
Good morning. It's 10 o'clock and I'll call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Nathan Tolbert.
Please read that for me. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a mission under Governor Dodd, individual with regard to the justice for all.
We'll begin with public comment on... Well, I will note first that Commissioner Rice is not going to be able to join us this morning. Or tomorrow morning, I understand. We will begin with public comment on matters not on the agenda. And we have a timer. Everyone gets three minutes. A yellow beep and light will appear when there's 30 seconds left and red when there is no more time. And we have further information about public comment in our agenda. Is there any opening public comment? Ms. Waller?
Good morning. I have comments on things that aren't being discussed today in the budget because I'm not sure I'll be available when they're brought forward. Douglas County should not be providing any contributions for microtransit, in my opinion, excuse me, until the casinos, Heavenly, Edgewood, all the other entities that benefit. They did the first year to get the event center open. They do benefit from parking mitigation fees from that event center. This begs the request for an update from the South Shore Transportation Management Authority before we make final decisions in April. Please follow in the footsteps of El Dorado County that slashed funds for the Tahoe Chamber of Commerce, Tahoe Prosperity Center, and other outside agencies. El Dorado is taking a deep dive. Why is Douglas County giving the Prosperity Center 30K? The contribution should be coming from the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, in my opinion. Also, the Prosperity Center says we are one of their upcoming envisioned Tahoe Summit, May 9th, meeting being held at the North Tahoe Event Center sponsors. Why isn't it at the South Shore Event Center? Next, and previously mentioned, the Tahoe Chamber funding is always up for discussion. Ask yourselves, why is El Dorado County cutting their contribution? Answer: county services are more important. I personally do not believe that the withdrawals from these two entities will create a rift in tourism advertising. This is the mission of the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority. Again, begs the question, when are we going to hear from the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority CEO as related to the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority? So when we are making contributions, maybe they should be, as previously stated, to the Prosperity Center. We are not updating the late 1990 community plans. The master plan has been updated twice since I've lived here. The community plans are crux of the future and the community members should be weighing in. The proposed housing needs assessment report line item for 50K should be revisited, in my opinion. Those dollars spent on what the community members really want in their communities and not just what I perceive as Douglas County wanting for us. The recent report from the Gwenn Center for Policies, a statewide nonpartisan policy research center, says that there is 31 bills related to housing in the legislature right now. Also, the Prosperity Center report from 2019 includes Douglas County. I'm just asking, as we're going through these plans, that we think about things that have been left behind, like community plans. I've been before you often about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, I will close public comment. We'll turn to our admin... Oh, approval of agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert, that we approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Our first and only agenda item for possible action, discussion to provide staff, direction in the preparation of the fiscal year '25-'26 budgets for all Douglas County and Douglas County Redevelopment Agency funds. Discussion may include a general overview of the Douglas County budget and presentations by staff, including but not limited to presentations on the following. General Fund, all departments, including supplemental requests. Special Revenue Funds, including supplemental requests. Debt Service Funds, enterprise funds, including supplemental requests. Internal Service Funds, including supplemental requests. Capital Projects Funds, including supplemental requests. Redevelopment Agency Funds and Capital Improvement Projects. We have here to present Kathy Lewis, our Chief Operating Officer. But before we get into the nuts and bolts, I want to take just a moment and note that there is a lot of national and actually local attention on efficiencies in the government. And we do expect at a later date to go into some detail about the comprehensive efforts that our county takes to make sure we are eliminating fraud, eliminating waste, and eliminating abuse, and being very efficient in the resources that we have. But just preliminary to these budget hearings, I invited our county manager, Jennifer Davidson, to touch briefly on our efforts, but we will, at a later date, have a presentation in more detail.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, county manager, for the record. I appreciate the question. Obviously, we have quite a bit going on nationally, a lot of eyes on the federal budget. And we in Douglas County, that's not news to us. We've had a lot of eyes on our budget for quite some time. We have put a number of protections in place to ensure that county resources are being used effectively and efficiently and to prevent any instances of fraud, waste, and abuse. I will briefly outline the internal controls we have in place to prevent those. And then I'm also happy to bring back a future presentation for the county commission if you wish me to go in depth on these topics. Generally, just, I think we should start with an overview. I think the biggest internal control we have in place is our budget process. These budget hearing meetings, these presentations, you'll be receiving over the course of these two days and then two additional days next week, is really an opportunity for the county commission to lay eyes on the budget. You have a big role as an internal control. This is your opportunity and members of the public's opportunity to visit with department heads regarding how the department heads plan to utilize their funds and to go through changes in their line items. We do approach, as part of our general budgeting process, we receive direction from the county commission regarding how you would like department heads to approach the budgeting process and what parameters they should put together their operating budget prior to giving their presentations today. Also, in their presentations, they're going to give you an overview of their accomplishments for the year, what their priorities are going into next year, and then any major changes year over year to individual line items. They should have explanations for you on those. If you... Each of the members of the commission have received the full copy of the budget, a complete line-by-line look at the county's comprehensive budget. It's nowhere near the volumes of data that the federal government is looking at, but if any member of the public wishes to have access to this information, it is available electronically online. And then additionally, we can provide printed copies upon request. And we're happy to meet with any member of the public to discuss our budget. It's not rocket science. It's pretty straightforward and all of that information is there. Additionally, throughout the year, as the county has adopted certain fiscal policies and have certain internal controls in place regarding the spending of the funds that have been allocated through the budget process. There's purchasing authority levels for department heads. Department heads have up to 10,000 level of authority. Anything between 10 and 50,000 comes to the county manager for review, and anything above 50,000 is required to go to the county commission for approval. As part of that review process to ensure internal controls have been set in place and proper questions have been asked, as departments are looking at spending line items throughout the year, anything in excess of 10,000 also goes to the Internal Review Committee, which consists of myself, the CFO, a representative from the DA's office, and every department head in our organization who wishes to participate and sit in on those meetings. They are well attended and we have some good critical thinking questions regarding whether or not the requests of the department are consistent with the county's fiscal policy, if they're best practice, but then also if there's a better way. We know as individual department heads are making these decisions relative to their department, sometimes they can get stuck in a siloed way of thinking. And so bringing these requests forward as part of the IRC conversation allows them to be challenged and to really have to assert their case as to whether or not that's the highest and best use of the funds that they're requesting. So IRC is one of the committees that's frequently referenced in your board packet, and that stands for Internal Review Committee. There is a policy that's been adopted that establishes that committee, and I'd be happy again to talk about that in greater detail. Additionally, the thing I am most proudest of is Douglas County did create an audit committee, which is a committee that sits with... has a variety of representatives from the public who sit and work with, are both our internal and external auditors, to review the county's budgets, the county's audits, fiscal policies. They meet at least quarterly, is my understanding, and they do give recommendations to this board regarding efficient and effective use of county funds and whether or not the internal controls we have in place are sufficient. We do our risk assessment every five years. The findings from the risk assessment conducted by Moss Adams are shared with the county commission and also with our audit committee. They help us evaluate our audit work plan, our internal audit work plan, to identify areas of risk for our organization and determine what needs a closer set of more scrutinized look, I would say. We review operating policies and procedures for departments as part of that work, and it does rotate, and it is set with oversight and functioning determined by the audit committee, but then also this board confirms the working plan for the audit committee. We also have our fraud, waste, and abuse program, which is operated through an independent third-party lighthouse administrator. Whenever a member of the public or anyone, it could be a county employee, raises a flag, they can submit their complaint or concern anonymously through the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, and that information is available on the county's website. A third-party administrator receives all of those complaints, and then they work with the county to determine how best to address them. They will make recommendations to us, and we do follow their recommendations in terms of whether or not an independent third-party investigation needs to be conducted. I'm very pleased our fraud, waste, and abuse program is working. We have identified a number of issues within the county that we have been able to very quickly address and in two instances have resulted in the criminal prosecution of individuals because they were misusing funds. But I think that's an indication that the program is working. I think there are a lot of organizations who will tell you they don't think they have problems with fraud, waste, and abuse, and I would say it is best not to take a bury-your-head-in-the-sand approach to that. I think you have to have policies and practices in place because there will be bad actors in this world, and we need to make sure that we're going to catch them as soon as possible. Additionally, a program that is near and dear to my heart is every individual in this organization is trained in ethics. I did work with George Washington University and the DA's office in drafting and ethics training. I believe we rolled it out beginning in 2022, and every single person in this organization was attended an in-person training. And then additionally, we just recently updated that. Anyone who has studied adult learning and ethics knows that you can't just put the same information in front of people and over and over again and expect them to pay attention. So we have done a thorough update of our ethics program, and we are in the process of training everyone again in this organization on ethics. And that goes beyond just ethics in government, fraud, waste, and abuse. It also talks about behavioral ethics and how we expect every person in this organization to operate within the values and policies and procedures that we have adopted. I think that's, as quickly as I can talk, there's a lot there, and I know this is an important matter for the public, and I'm grateful for the question.
That was great. Thank you very much. Do you have a very brief question, Commissioner Gardner?
I do. I do. You mentioned IRC, Internal Review Committee. Can you tell us the makeup of that committee, please?
Yes. The minimum core group for IRC to function includes the county manager, the assistant county manager, the CFO, human resources, and a representative from the DA's office. Always, those five will be represented at the table, but additionally, we extend an invitation for every department head in the organization to sit in on those meetings. We do take minutes and we do have a record of what occurs in those meetings.
And so as I understand it, before an item hits this board's agenda, it has to have been reviewed by the Internal Review Committee to ensure that all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and it's ready for primetime. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. Yes.
Okay. You mentioned the audit committee. Can you tell us how the makeup of the audit committee? And I'm not asking these, you know, and you know that, okay? I know who is, but I think the public needs to know who's on our audit committee.
Thank you for the question, Vice Chairman. Jennifer Davidson, county manager, for the record. So there are five representatives on the audit committee. They are appointed by this board. One commissioner sits on the audit committee. The others are selected from the general public. Individuals do apply and express interest when positions become available, and this commission makes your appointment based on the background of those individuals. I'm really pleased with the makeup of the audit committee currently. We have a good cross-representation of our residents in a variety of backgrounds, some financial, some audit background, some just general public perspective, which I think, again, adds to the quality of the decision-making coming out of that group.
So, and that was, I guess, my point, is that it's primarily made up of individual residents within our community.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And their responsibility is not to audit us, but rather to review maybe what the... our independent auditor brings forward and suggests maybe they take a look at, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And if I may just clarify, both our external auditor and our internal auditors are independent of this organization. They are third parties that have been selected by the county commission to audit the functionings of this organization.
Thank you. I think that was a great preliminary to the budget details. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
During this budget hearing, I think we should operate on a more casual basis, so if you have a question, you know, I don't know that you need to be recognized by me, and let's just go forward in that manner, if you're good with that. And with that, we'll turn it to our Chief Operating Officer, Kathy Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Lewis, Chief Operating Officer. Thank you. This is the beginning of our four days of budget hearings. As our county manager indicated, very detailed budget hearings. I hope you're looking forward to, as I'm looking forward to, hearing from every department about what they do and going through their budget. I will do an overview this morning, so if you have any questions as we go through the overview, like Chairman, Chairwoman indicated, please stop me. So I wanted to give the NRS definition of what a budget is. Sorry, I gotta move the second read. NRS defines a budget as a plan for a financial operation embodying the estimated... An estimate of the proposed expenditures and expenses for a given period and the proposed means for financing them. We are here to talk about the budget for next fiscal year, which is July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026. This, going through what the state requires, I always like to show this, per the state requirements, they require the county to submit a tentative budget on their state forms by April 15th. They require a budget hearing to be held between May 19th and May 30th, and they require an adopted budget by June 2nd. So this is the state requirements. But then what we've done in Douglas County, for the past couple months, the county departments and elected officials and finance have been working on the base budgets, any supplemental requests and CIP requests. We've been reviewing and meeting with departments as needed to go through that. If you remember, on January 16th, we did a budget kickoff with the Board of County Commissioners, and you guys approved the budget directives that the departments and elected officials used to build their budget. Starting today, we'll have four days of budget hearings, Monday, Tuesday this week, Monday and Tuesday next week, where we'll go through that tentative budget. We will submit a tentative budget by April 15th, as required, on the state forms. This budget is not required, and I'm not encouraging the Board of County Commissioners to adopt it. This is a tentative budget. What you have in your binders, that is the tentative budget we'll submit. What we're looking... We did do this for action so we could receive direction from the board, but not any formal approval of the budget. We know this is a tentative budget. We're still working through a lot of things, and so just tentative. And then we'll come back before you on April 30th at a special meeting to do any updates and to talk about the full CIP. We've asked each department to present their individual CIPs, and so we'll come back with that whole program. May 27th is that one required budget hearing that we have to have per the state law. And we're hoping at that hearing, we'll be ready to adopt a budget. At the same time, the towns will present their budgets for adoption, too. And then submit our budget on January... I mean, sorry, on June 2nd. And what I forgot on here was July 1st, we start a new fiscal year, which I will say, until everybody agrees with me, I think is more exciting than a calendar new year. I think the fiscal year for us is more exciting than the New Year's on December 31st. We talked about it. I think this is... This slide repeats what we've talked about, four full days of hearings. Our goal is to really give you guys and the public an understanding of what each department does and where the county funds are allocated. Again, we're not seeking approval, but we are seeking any direction that you have. The next couple of slides I have here are the budget directives that were approved at that January 16th meeting. And I'll go quickly through it of what we use these directives to build the tentative budget and to continue to build that final budget. We want to... Our general fund and any special revenue funds, we want to be structurally balanced. The enterprise and internal service funds need to be at their full cost of providing the services in each of those funds, which we'll talk about in a little bit what that means. Revenues, we want to budget revenues conservatively based on the trend data as well as what the state has provided us and departments have provided us. In this tentative budget, there are no new personnel costs unless they've been approved by this board. So if departments are looking to restore any positions that we put on hold or eliminated last for this fiscal year at last year's budget hearings, we're asking them to come forward as a personnel request, which none of those positions have come forward as a personal request, supplemental request. And then the tentative budget is built on our current county library contracts and the resolutions previously approved by the board. Our services and supplies, we've asked departments to really scrub their budget for the second year, to look for any line items that they historically have been underspent, to consider either reducing or eliminating those line items. We've asked them to not increase the services and supplies budget unless they have to, unless they've looked through and there's a contract increase or another increase. And we've asked departments to seek first, if there's another line item they can reduce first before they increase their budget. We do have increases in service supplies, but not as high as we had in the prior year for that. And any new programs or one-time expenditures are done through a supplemental. They're not built into this tentative budget. Sorry. The cost allocation plan, we're still working on that and will bring forward for approval. It will be based on the 23-24 actual expenditures. You will see in this tentative budget, we did a 15% increase for the cost plan and the risk allocation. The cost plan numbers have not been updated since, I think, 2021 or 21-22, and we've had significant increases in costs since then. So we expect an increase in our cost allocation, but we don't have those final numbers yet for that. And a cost allocation for the public and for the board is a plan that we have an independent third-party help us with to complete it. It allocates the costs in the general fund that are used by other funds to operate. So it allocates the human resources costs to the other funds for the human resources support or for finances support or for IT support. All those costs are in the general fund, but as we know, to operate parks or to operate the senior center or operate the library, they do need HR services, they do need financial services, they do share in the cost of the audit. So that's what the cost allocation plan does. This is... I put this up here. We're working on updating these numbers, but this was our guide to determine if it was a CIP request or a supplemental request. If it was over these amounts, it's a CIP request or capital request. If it's under, it's just a supplemental request. So that was the directives that were approved on January 16th by this board. Going into and talking about the county budget as an overview, and hopefully, if I'm... Sorry if I'm repeating, if I'm preaching to the choir, if you guys already know, but I do want to talk about how government's a little bit different than businesses. In government, we operate or we budget based on a fund structure. Each fund is a self-contained, self-balancing fund. When we had the discussions about purchasing the movie theater, that movie theater was purchased out of a special revenue fund. Each fund has its own ballot sheet. Each fund has its own income statement. We can transfer funds between... We can transfer money between funds, but that requires your approval. And that is the source of those funds. We need to make sure if we're going to transfer it to another fund, it's a proper use of that transfer. For example, in the general fund, we normally adopt a budget where the general fund will support some special revenue funds through transfers. We will transfer money to the library to support the library. We transfer money to the senior center to help with the senior center operations. We do have operating transfers that we do out of the general fund to other funds. And we have funds... So any transfer has to be approved. So if you think each fund is its own self-governing, self-contained, self-balancing fund. Per our guidance, these are the types of funds that we can operate in a government. We have a general fund, and that's the general ordinary operations. It includes all the operations of our elected officials. It includes operations of our courts, operations of our internal service funds, operations of community development is in the general fund. And then we have many special revenue funds. We can create these special revenue funds as we see fit to help us govern. We've, over the years, created special revenue funds to account for the room tax dollars that we collect, to account for the road operating, so we know what those cost. So that money that's collected for road operating goes right to that special revenue fund. We have one for China Spring. We have it's a special revenue fund. Those revenues go right to that fund, self-governing, and that expense in there. Then we have internal service funds, which operate like a business. They're supposed to be self-contained, not have necessarily a general fund transfer to support it, but they serve our internal customers. We have three internal service funds. We have dental, our self-insured dental. We have our risk management that helps with our risk activities. And then we also have motor pool, which is an internal service fund. The enterprise funds operate most like a business. We expect those, again, like the internal service funds, not to have a general fund support. We expect those to be... To have, set their fees that cover their operations. And this is our water fund, the airport fund, the sewer fund, regional water. Those are fees that you guys set in the presentation. They're saying this is how much revenue we need to support the operations in this fund.
Can I ask a question about that? I assume, as I prepare for regular meetings, that all matters we do touching on enterprise funds, anything we approve comes from the enterprise fund. So I imagine you would give us a big red flag if the enterprise funds were not self-contained.
Absolutely. You're right. And that's usually those... And that's usually those, those, at some point, it's not done every year, but usually those fees are reviewed by a third party or set by a third party because we want to make sure that whatever fees you set will, will sustain it for, for the future. But yes, and, and that's a little bit why when, when you're going through supplementals, their supplementals are treated differently because they are funded by the fees that they collect. So they are funded by the water customers that they serve or by the sewer customers that they serve. Yes. The other type of fund you can have is a capital fund. We have several capital funds to, we don't have to use capital funds. We can fund capital in, in any of our funds that we want. This allows us easier to track for it. So if we have a project that lasts more than a year or is capital nature, it's easier to track it in a capital fund and we can, and that goes from year to year to year. So we know what those are. And the last type of fund that we have, I forgot one up here. So second to the last type of fund I have up here is redevelopment funds. Redevelopment agencies are a creation of the board, and when they're created, those funds are completely separate. We have three redevelopment funds. One is for the redevelopment area number one, which is dissolved, it's down in the valley. But we still have funds in there. You've, you've had discussions of how to spend it. That money sits in there until it's decided how it's going to be spent. It can't be reallocated to any other use. It's collected for redevelopment uses. There's, I'm sure DA could, Deputy DA could explain more of all the requirements, but it's very regimented what it can be used for. And then we have two redevelopment area number two funds. Again, that, that redevelopment area has been dissolved, but we have an obligation to pay $1.3 million of those redevelopment dollars towards the Tahoe Blue Center. So the first $1.3 million that's collected in that area goes to the obligation, and the rest of those funds go back to the other ones. But those funds are used to account for that. And the one I forgot is we also have a debt fund. The debt fund accounts for any non-enterprise debt that we account for that. And so you'll see, when we do our final adoption for our, our Justice Center bonds, it won't show as a debt payment in the general fund. It'll show as a transfer to the debt fund to pay for that. And we do that because there's, sorry, there's, there's many, there's bond ordinance or bond requirements of what we need to keep as a reserve and stuff like that. And it's easier to show our, who we sold the bonds to that we are doing what we're supposed to by showing it in the debt fund.
Could you back up? I just want to make sure I understand the slide before this one.
Oh, yes. Oh, maybe.
Yeah, here. You said supplemental, tell me again, supplemental requests are?
We'll use this to determine if we really have like a capital project or a supplemental request for that.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
So in, in Douglas County, we have 37 of those self-contained funds, so self-balancing, self-contained funds. We have one general fund, 20 special revenue funds, our three internal service funds, four enterprise, five capital, one debt, and three redevelopment funds. So each of these funds in your binder, and, and, and the binder has been published online, is, is self-contained. You will see that it's all together there.
Mr. Lewis, I, I missed this on the redevelopment because I know there was a redevelopment area one and a redevelopment area two. So how do we have three redevelopment funds there?
Thank you for that question. Redevelopment area two actually has two funds, one where we collect the money and one where we spend it out. I, I know it's a requirement, but I don't know if I could eloquently tell you why we have to have those two funds.
And that was up to 1.3 million. So if there's, if there's, if that is deficient, then we only submit what we, we have there, right?
Right. The, the funds currently are more than $1.3 million that would be collected, but yes, you're right. These slides, you actually saw last May when, when the budget was adopted of what it looked like for our 24, 25 total adopted budget. And we've shown them many times since then. After this hearing, I'll update that to be the 24, 25, I mean, 25, 26 adopted, or let me start over, 25, 26 tentative budget and what that looks like for next year. But I wanted to show, go through pretty quickly of what it looked like, what we adopted for this fiscal year. Is the general fund makes up 31% of our total funds adopted. Special revenue funds, about the same thing, 30, 31%. Also included in here are the town funds, and they are 11, 11.65% of the total, total budgets are how they are represented. And then looking again, total county, we have about 41% of our total budget comes from taxes and intergovernmental revenue. Intergovernmental revenue is revenue we receive from another government, whether it be from grants, state consolidated taxes, but some money that we receive from another government. And then looking just in the general fund, 41% come from property taxes. So the taxes in the general fund are just property taxes. Taxes in other funds could be gas taxes, room taxes, other that. But in the general fund, it's just property taxes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I just wanted to jump in here because I've given a variety of presentations to the public on the general fund. And when I've been speaking about the general fund in particular, I've been using, I think, a $67 million number in my presentations. And I just want to explain the reason for the variance. It is that beginning fund balance. So in my presentations, I'm not including the fund balance because it's fund balance and I'm not considering it is relevant to the conversations. But I just want to make sure that I'm transparent with the public and explain why.
Again, looking at all funds on the expenditures, when you look at the entire county altogether, which is our capital and our debt and, and those redevelopment funds, we have about 30% of, of our total budget goes to salaries and benefits. Again, this is, it gets a little bit diluted because of the big capital funds we have and the big debt manage, debt funds we have, but. But then looking at the general fund, 61% of the adopted budget goes to, goes to salaries and benefits. And then looking in the general fund in the category, I think our county manager, Davidson, touched on this a little bit about the, how the fund breaks up. So we have, you know, public safety makes up almost 40% of our general fund expenditures. And for that, so public works, which includes community development is about 1.7. And then we have the general government is about 24%. So that was over the funds. I wanted to go into the general fund revenues. Let's show real quick. So, uh, one more, sorry. 66% of our general fund are from taxes and intergovernmental revenue. The two biggest pieces of that are property taxes and state consolidated taxes. And before we get started, I wanted to tell you where we're, where we're looking at for those two revenue sources, since they are so big and so, makes such a big part of what our general fund looks like. I showed this slide last year. I updated it. I wanted to go through because, go through it again, how property tax works in Nevada. It is a little bit complicated, and, and the nuances make for interesting stories, I guess. In 2004, see, I may, sorry, in 2000, sorry, in 2005, the state legislature capped the taxes in Nevada. And they capped the taxes, not the assessed value, not the, not the rate, but the actual taxes, that as a resident or your taxes cannot go up more than 3%. And any commercial cannot go up more than 8%. So this is one parcel. It's a parcel that I've been tracking since 2004 and probably pretty easy to track because it's my own parcel, so I look at it. So in 2004, you can see that I paid $1,800 in taxes. My assessed value, if you took the assessed value times the tax rate in 2004, it was 1,889. In 2005, if you would have taken that assessed value times my tax rate, I would have paid $2,500. But because they capped the taxes, I only paid $1,900. I only paid a 3% increase from the prior year. Going forward, so the, the part in orange is what the taxes could have been if we didn't, if Nevada did not cap the taxes, this is where our taxes would have been. But because Nevada capped the taxes, this is, this line is what I actually paid for it.
I have one question on that. So when you have a year where the increase isn't, say, 3% for residential, can they go back and raise it 3% because the previous year was 6%? Okay, so it's a yearly basis.
Mm-hmm, yes. The, the interesting stories about this is if you can see like in this year, and I will add on to this slide the assessed value because I think that's significant to look like too. I just looked at the taxes. But in here, the assessed value, because this is assessed value times tax rate, my assessed value went down quite a bit. This was right in 2008, '09, right at the recession. But my taxes still went up 3% because I still was paying less in taxes than if I, if it hadn't been capped. So this was where I, I wasn't in the clerk treasurer's office at the time, but I sure felt bad for them because they had a lot of residents saying, wait, my assessed value just went down 20%, and you're telling me my taxes are going up 3%? So this is, yes, because it was still less than what you could have paid if it wasn't capped.
So that was my question. So they do go back and raise it 3% if it wasn't, if there was a carryover?
It's year to year. So like in this year here, right in here, it was only went up like 0.2% because of the CPI, but they didn't, they still, they only went up 2.2% that year. I don't know if I understood your question right. They didn't go back and say, the next year, they didn't go back and say, well, only increase it 2.2.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Ms. Lewis, this, this is where our residents really struggle, okay? Because they say, well, if they, if, if we need more revenue in the county, the Board of Commissioners would just raise, raise your property taxes. And that, that's not possible, right? I mean, this is prescribed by NRS. We don't have the ability to raise it. And, and the assessor can only raise it, or the clerk treasurer can only raise it by 3% a year based on that assessment. So everything's tied back to the, to the property assessment, not to that, and its maximum of 3% on a, on an annual basis. So we can't just all of a sudden say, well, we want 4% instead or 5%. It's capped there at three.
It, it is capped. And I'll show you the line in just a second, but then I think in two slides, I'll show you why, why Douglas County can't raise their tax rate too for that. So, so we have, we have the, the cap for, in two different spaces, a couple of different places. So yes. I think this is always an interesting slide to me, my own personal commentary. For, as a resident, this is great. My taxes are capped. As, as a local government, these were the revenues that we did not have because of the cap for that piece of it. For that. So, and you can tell even this year, I look at this, my assessed value went down a little bit, but my taxes will still go up 3%. So my assessed value did decrease a little bit for coming up in 25, 26, but my taxes will still increase 3% because I'm still below this orange piece up here. And looking at what those caps are, a little bit discussion we had is that, so the commercial cap is based on the higher of either two times the CPI or the 10-year rolling average assessed value growth, whichever is greater, but it can't exceed 8%. And then the residential cap is 3% unless the commercial cap goes below 3% and then it goes to wherever that commercial cap is. So here is the, you know, the recession was back in here, and we were still growing 8% on the commercial side. And then that 10-year rolling average right here, this big drop in assessed value finally caught up to that 10-year rolling average here. And that's when the, when the commercial cap was less than 8%. The interesting thing about here is because it's based on the year, the, the, either two times the CPI or the rolling average, it took a long time for Douglas County and for most counties to see an 8% cap again. And then this year, the state let us know that our cap's at 6.1%. And we just found out that last week. I want to redo their math, but that's what they've reported to us for that. And, and here's the two years that the commercial cap was lower than the 3%. So then the residential cap went below 3%. And then Commissioner Gardner, I think this is probably the biggest factor of why we can't raise our property taxes. In Nevada, our, the maximum property tax that can be assessed on a parcel is $3.66. We have five areas, five, five districts in Douglas County that are at that 3.66 cap. So there's, there's a couple of caps. The state says, the state releases information and they base up, based on your growth rate and stuff like that, they say your tax rate could be this dollar. The state has said that we could have a tax rate of 1.37, but we could only keep it at the 1.16 because we're at the 3.66 cap. So even though the state said we could raise our rate to this, we don't have the ability because we're under that, we're at that 3.66 cap. And I always pick on, if you pick on the, the state, let's say the state decided, we don't need 17 cents, we only need 14 cents. If they decreased their rate by 14 cents, then we could take that 4 cents and increase our rate. I don't think that's going to happen, but if they did it, we could do it. For the homeowner, though, they wouldn't see an increase because they're still, their rate would still be the net same for that. But this is probably the biggest factor why we can't increase our property tax rate. We have to live with where we're at. So that is property taxes. Do you guys have any questions before I go to sales tax? Oh, I'm sorry, one other slide. Our one, our, our property tax rate of 1.168 is broken up. These are the funds, the individual funds that they go to. So our general operating rate is 87 cents of that. We also have a penny that goes cooperative extension, 6 cents that helps assistance to indigence, that helps our social services, senior services. We also have a social services rate, a little bit to China Spring to help our share of what China Spring costs. We can, we can do a property tax rate for it. A voter-approved tax rate of $4.75 for to help support 911. Our risk management has a quarter, 3/4 cent. Ad Valorem Capital Projects, 5 cents of our property tax goes rates to support that. Regional Transportation, 5.63 goes to support the roads in, in regional transportation. And then the state gets $1.50 for the state motor vehicle accident fund for that.
This is the appropriate time to ask this question. If not, you can answer it later. But speaking with our county manager, most other counties have a dedicated fund for road maintenance. It looks like we have one there, but it's only at 5.63 cents. Where is the other county's funds coming from?
Gas taxes is the most one that it's coming from.
We have a gas tax too. This is supposed to be something that's what we don't have.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner, Madam Chair, if I may. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. Several of those counties also have a sales tax component, which is dedicated for infrastructure. They do it for roads, some stormwater, and a variety of other purposes.
Sales tax?
Are you covering sales tax next? Yes. And diesel tax. We do not have diesel tax.
So then I want to go back to this. So because we're capped at 3.66, we can't, and we, and this is part of that 3.66, we can't increase this fund?
Right.
Okay.
There, there is the ability of, of moving some of those rates around. Like if you wanted more to the general fund or less to other ones, some of them are statutory requirement. I think the cooperative extension has to be at a penny. It's, it's good, we, we can go up to 5 cents for capital, which is good. And some, so there might be a little bit of room to, to move within that, but not add to it. So looking at where our property tax projection is, I will tell you that this projection number includes a commercial cap at 8% because that's what built the tentative budget in. And then we found out last week that the commercial cap was going down to 6.1, so I've not built that into the tentative budget yet. So this number will go down for the budget for 25, 26. What I've seen over the years is, and this is just what I have seen, it's, property tax is an interesting one to project because every homeowner, every home is unique. The cap is unique. If you have a neighbor who maybe rented their property out, if you have a neighbor who's exactly like you and they rented their property out and you are, you know, you've owned it, their property taxes could have grown at that 8% cap versus my taxes grew out of 3% cap. So every home is, is, is very unique. Or if I added a garage in one year, it came on at a different rate than if they added the garage at the other rate and then it adds that cap. So property taxes is a hard one to take a stab at, at projecting. It really is the, our, our treasurer, our county treasurer needs to run it in their system as a, as a projection, and then we can use those numbers. and then we can use those numbers. What I've seen over the years is it seems like that the growth on the existing assessed value is about halfway between the commercial cap and the residential cap. So we're about a 4.75%, we expect a 4.75% growth-ish on our existing assessed value. And then anything above that would be on our new assessed value. So really, for me, at this point, is talking to our assessor and talking to our community development of what they think new values will be, what new values will be added to the roll in July. The other complication is, for the assessor, he's doing that work right now. He doesn't know what that is until he actually does the work in the next couple of months. But I looked at where we're at. '22, '23, we added $114 million in new construction. '23, '24, $79 million. Last year, we projected $79 million, but we actually added $128 million, so that was better. And talking with our assessor, Trent, and looking at community development, this projection includes $110 million in new construction for that.
Ms. Lewis, so you're saying that a rental property is considered a commercial property, is that?
I think you'll have to ask Trent. I think there are some rentals that could be qualified as residential, but I'm not sure of the rules.
How do we, and is there any method of, how do we monitor that? How do we, if an individual is renting out their home but claims it as their residence, then how do we monitor that?
I don't know. I think that'd be a great question for the assessor.
Okay, thank you. I'll write that down.
Now I'm going to sales tax. The state consolidated tax includes a sales tax component, the two, actually two components of the sales tax. Every county in Nevada has the minimum tax rate of 6.85%. So every county assesses that as the minimum, which includes 2% that goes to the general fund, 2.65% goes to the school districts, a half a cent that is the basic city-county relief tax that comes back to the county, distributed back to the county based on if it's in-state, it's on our in-state collections. If it's out-of-state, it's distributed based on population. And then 1.75% is a supplemental city-county relief tax. Those taxes, that's where the guaranteed county discussion happens. We have several counties that are guaranteed a certain amount, and then after that guaranteed amount is paid, we receive the rest of the distributions based on our in-state collections is how it's distributed back to us for that. And this is the slide.
Are these, I have to ask, are these based on ZIP codes? How do we track this? Because I know that we have, you know, portions of our county in the north that get their mail from Carson City, and we have a lot of businesses up there. And also, South County, and a lot of that area is, you know, a ZIP code of 89444, where I live gets our mail from Wellington, and so that's Lyon County. Are we confident that we're getting our proper amount of taxes for our county?
The state does not release individual details, and so there's not a way for me to audit that information. In discussions, they base it on the address of the return. So, for example, we had actually an employee who bought something from the store up by Target that sells the side-by-sides, and she paid Douglas County's tax rate. But the state does not release detailed information, so I don't have it in detail to look at.
But on that, the ZIP codes, they are unique. So the Carson City ZIP codes is 89705. Soon as you cross the border, it drops to another ZIP code. So Douglas County getting Carson City mail is its own ZIP code, so they stop tracking. I believe Wellington's the same.
I think this is the slide, Commissioner Tocanyan, that will help you see what all the different additional sales tax rates that were allowed, that other counties have added on top of that minimum tax rate. In Douglas County, we have in 1999 added a quarter cent for the Powell's Tax, which supports the seniors' parks and library. But you'll see other counties, if the county's not listed on here, then they have the minimum tax rate. But if the county's listed on here, you'll see the additional tax rate that they implemented. I always love this slide because not only do you know the tax rate, but you know the provision of how they did it, what NRS they used to implement it, and what year they did it.
Okay, so looking at this, Carson adds 25 cents for public roads. Churchill's 25 cents. Clark has, or Regional Transportation is probably Clark, huh? Okay, so all those have an additional addition to their base sales tax, and that pays for their roads. And Douglas County had decided not to do that to keep the tax rates low, and therefore, we don't have enough money to pay for the public roads. Am I understanding this correctly?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. And I do think this will be a topic for a lot of discussion for future presentation by the county commission. But in general, yes, there's a lot of reasons why we don't have enough money for roads. This is one of them. There is also, I would just note, several counties that have just a flat-out infrastructure funding quarter cent sales tax, which could be used for roads or other types of infrastructure. And then, for the record, and those members of the public who may be curious, if it was created under these provisions that are referenced, it is restricted for that particular use. So if a county were to create a sales tax quarter cent or implement a quarter cent sales tax increase, it would be restricted and set aside for that specific use. We couldn't divert it for other types of projects.
So talking about the state consolidated tax, like we talked about, it's not just sales tax. Most of it is. 65% of our state consolidated tax is this supplemental city-county relief tax. But it also includes a little bit from the taxes collected on cigarette and liquor. It's distributed back to us based on the population. The state consolidated taxes also includes real property transfer tax. These are the taxes collected by our recorder that she submits to the state, and then the state submits back to us on a quarterly basis. And then the government service tax is the taxes collected on motor vehicles. That's just distributed back to us. The state, so the state consolidated taxes is the pledged revenue that we use for the Justice Center bonds. The state, if you remember last year's discussion, projected, I think, about a 1% decrease in the state consolidated taxes for this year. When I was before you in January, I said that we were cautiously collecting on target. I don't have an update on how we're collecting because the state has switched their system, so we haven't had a full distribution since January. So I don't know where we're at collecting through the busier months, but I will update you as soon as I do know that part of it. But for next year, the state is projecting just under a half a percent increase in state consolidated taxes. And this has been built into the tentative budget, these numbers. So looking at the general fund, property tax projection is at 8%. Again, that will go down for the final because our commercial rate went down to 6.1%. State consolidated taxes, oh, it's not a negative, sorry, that's a typo. It's a growth, it's a positive .43% growth in state consolidated taxes. Our tentative budget, the ending fund balance represents 15.14% of our expenditures. Our goal is to be between, for the budget, our goal is between one and a half months to two months. Two months is 16.8%. And then we have a policy that says that when, at the end of the year, we shall end actually at at least the two months thing. So we're close to that, but we do have some big nuts to crack, I guess, if you want to say, before we get to our final. We are in negotiations with our deputies and sergeants. The property tax projection, the actual one that comes from the state, we will receive tomorrow. So we'll get that final projection from them tomorrow. We continue to look at our accounts. As you can tell, that book is very thick. Every time you look at it, there's always something we question, or look at, or revise, or make better. The final debt service, we have that now, so we'll update the final debt service for our bonds that we just sold. And we want to continue to review our revenue and expenditure line items and continue to evaluate any other proposed supplementals. I put these slides in there. This spreadsheet was released to, or was supplemental to the public on Friday. We also provided hard copies of all our funds, of where it looks like in revenue and expenditures at a glance. So you have the detail, but if you want to see how each fund is doing, this is a summary of each fund. When we talk about the revenue, the special revenue funds, here's a list of them by numerical order. That includes the law library and the library and road operating. We have China Spring, stormwater, 911s in here. Here's our three risk funds, I mean, our three internal service funds. And our four enterprise funds. Here's our capital projects, debt service, and redevelopment funds, the three redevelopment funds. FTE, we wanted to show a reconciliation. Last year, when the budget was adopted, it was adopted with 608.4 FTE. Currently, the tentative budget includes 613.14 FTE. That change is 4.74, but please note that four of those FTE are actually grant-funded positions throughout the year that you've approved through different grants that have been approved. And then the remaining, which is the net increase and decrease, was funded through existing budget as it was brought forward for that. This is a quick overview of our next four days' look-alike of who's coming when to talk to you. After I'm done here, you'll go to the sheriff. And then this afternoon, we have community development, emergency management, and information technology. Some helpful hints when you're reviewing the budgets and for the public reviewing the budgets. If you look in actuals, I think for, I think, last year's actuals, it will show a negative service and supplies offset. That was a GASP that we had to implement based on capital leases, and that was a reclassification to the capital section. Most of the capital is not built into the tentative budget, but we did make exceptions. We always, every year, the ongoing exception is the sheriff's vehicles and the motor pool vehicles. But we also added the movie theater and the Denmark property purchases because those were approved by this board for next year's budget. So we added those into the tentative budget. We encourage departments to adjust their line items for next year's budget to help them manage their budget. Those line items adjustments, of course, they're ready to prepare and talk about them, but I also think it's helpful to look at the bottom line and see what the net increase and decrease was in their budget. The other pieces, you'll see, and in a lot of budget, the budgets might have gone up because of that cost allocation, risk management, or any motor pool charges. Those are ones that finance works on and puts on and not necessarily under the control of the individual departments. And before I go on to the next slide, as you were reviewing, if there's any other questions that you would like to know or if there's any other comments that I need to make before they start reviewing budgets. This is all I have. I definitely want to thank, of course, the county manager. She's always a great resource and knows so much, so it's nice to bounce things off with her as we talk through it. And the departments and elected officials are always great to work with when we're going through the budget. And the finance staff, which most of them are in the back here, worked long hours to get the budget where we're at. And you're almost done listening to me, and you get to listen to departments soon. So that's all I have.
We'll listen to you any day. You are great. That is an excellent budget presentation. I learn a little bit more every time, and you make it as clear as it could possibly be, so thank you very much. I see no questions. So it is 11:04 right now, and I would like to take just a short break and come back fresh and ready to listen to the sheriff at 11:10. All right, it's 11:10. We will reconvene. We are pleased to have Sheriff Dan Coverley and Under Sheriff Ron August here with us today. Thank you.
Thanks for having me today, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I look forward to this every year. Not really. But I do like coming first when you guys are fresh and excited about the budget process, and so hopefully that works to my advantage. So I have my undersheriff with me here today, and then also our financial analyst Kerry Sheets is in the audience. I'd first like to start out by thanking you as the board. Your support throughout the year is tremendous, and we couldn't do it without you. Finance is, we are probably the biggest pain to them. We're 24 hours, seven days a week. We have a bargaining unit. There's all kinds of moving parts, and our budget is fairly large for the general fund. And so there's a lot going on, and we're in constant contact with them, and they are very responsive, and I think we work very well together. And so I want to thank them for all their hard work and tolerance that they have, patience with us. So the sheriff's office is comprised of four divisions. The administration division, which is myself, I've got a captain, John Stork. He's actually, his office is at the lake, and he's kind of our liaison with the community at the lake. And then, as you can see, the undersheriff, an admin sergeant, deputy that's assigned there that does a lot of our IT stuff. And then our records division, which is who you see mostly when you come to the sheriff's office, a lot of activity there. And then my front office, and Kerry's included in that. Investigations division is, they do a ton of work. They're not kind of the frontline that you see most of the time. They're more behind the scenes, but we have 11 investigators. And then five of those are assigned to various narcotic task forces, and those are listed. Trinet, which is a state one. Our DC SET, which is just Douglas County. Those are detectives that work narcotics cases just within the county. And then we have a deputy or detective assigned to the FBI task force. That's a safe streets task force, they call that. They concentrate on gangs and weapons violations. They do some narcotic stuff. Have a detective assigned to DEA task force, and that's a regional task force, all of northern Nevada. And then I also have a detective assigned to Homeland Security. And they do all kinds of stuff. Homeland Security is one of those federal agencies that just does just about everything. The big benefit to Douglas County with having a deputy in that assignment is the exploitation of children. So they work a lot of those cases. And we have two evidence techs and then a secretary there in investigations. Captain Britton, his, he's been with the sheriff's office over 40 years. He's a wealth of knowledge. He's done just about every assignment in the sheriff's office, but he really excelled as a detective, as a sergeant within investigations. And so he runs a really strong group. But those are the cases that they work, are the high profile cases. So currently, we have four individuals in custody for homicide, three different cases, two co-defendants in one case, which is unusual for Douglas County. I've never had, in my 28 years here with the sheriff's office, I've never had four people in jail at one time for homicide. Usually, it's one or two at the most. So that's unique. It's a, it's not the norm, but it is, it is kind of unique. But they do a lot of cases. Every, every case that we do involves some sort of digital forensics. So everyone has a cellphone, everyone has a computer, and there's always evidence, regardless of what kind of case it is, on those devices. And so almost every case that those guys work, we obtain some sort of device, whether it's a cellphone or a computer, and then we have to get into it and look for that evidence within that. So that takes special programs and special training and stuff, and it's just, it's not, it's much different than when I was an investigator. And the, the knowledge base that they have to have and the technical skills is just amazing. I don't know that I would be very good at it if I was in there now. It's crazy. Patrol, which is the most visible unit within the sheriff's office, those are the guys that are out taking calls for service. We have a total of 50 deputies, including the captain, six sergeants. We have a traffic unit, which is three guys that they're dedicated to just doing, enforcing traffic and doing crash investigations. Within the patrol division, we have our K-9 unit, which is eight dogs currently at the time. So there's usually a dog on every shift of the day, and they do a great job. I think, we'll get to it, but our patrol division is very, very busy, whether they're taking calls for service or doing proactive enforcement. One of the biggest complaints that my office receives is traffic. I'm sure that's no surprise to anyone, but it's just, there's a lot of cars on the road, and it seems like a lot of knuckleheads driving. So we try, we try to get the ones we can. So we also participate, our patrol division participates in a grant, which funds the overtime for officers. It's called the joining forces grant with the state, and they pay for overtime for deputies to work extra shifts, and all they do is enforce certain traffic laws. And there's usually a theme with each assignment, whether it's speeding or distracted driving on your cellphone or DUI or those types of things. Crosswalk is one of the ones they do. And so we try to augment what we're already doing in patrol, especially with our traffic unit with that grant. And the jail. The jail is kind of an island within the sheriff's office. Its budget is very specific to, to that. There's a lot of what I would call restricted funds within the jail budget that can only be used for inmate welfare and taking care of the inmates. And so it's not something I can move money out of the jail and put to another division. It's very specific to the jail. It is one of our, the, probably the only division within the sheriff's office where I actually generate some revenue. So through our inmate phone system, which is a company called NCIC, we generate roughly about $4,000 a month from the, and that's just the inmates being able to call out. They also have tablets that they have access to that will allow them to do visits over the tablet, like a, on your phone, on my, FaceTime, yeah, on your phone. So they can do visits that way. It's all monitored and we can control. So if there's any shenanigans or they're doing things that they're not supposed to, we can turn that off or stop that. But it is, they pay for that, and it does generate some revenue for the county. There's about 40 sworn positions within the jail, and then we have our civil secretary, our food services, which is our chef. So the, we have a full kitchen in the jail. It's all run through inmate labor. So the cook instructs the inmates on how to, how to cook. They actually can get a certificate if they're in there long enough, a culinary certificate. And so everything is cooked from scratch every day, three meals a day. The food is very good. And in fact, we're kind of a popular spot as far as jail goes, as far as our food. I can remember picking a guy up in Lyon County, and he was so excited to come to Douglas because the food was so much better. So we got that going for us. And then we have a jail secretary that does stuff also. And then also, if you come into the JLEC building, you go through a security check, those guys are under the jail also, or the jail division, and they're part-time, but they do all of our security. And then we also have, I kind of glossed over, we have bailiffs for justice court and district court that are under the jail division. So some of the supplemental requests that we've been talking with the county manager and Kathy Lewis about, and one thing that Kathy alluded to it a little bit, is the relationship with the county manager's office, and we work very well. And so I am aware of the budget limitations or budget constraints, or what I have to work with as we develop our budget for the year. And so these are some things that we would like to have, but we are currently working without them, and we will continue to work without them if we're not able to fund them. The top one is, so every ticket that we're, that we write is through a program called Brazos, and that is a digital, it's a, it's over like an iPAC. You get a little printout. If you've gotten a ticket recently, you'll, you'll know what I'm talking about. And then they're automatically downloaded to the state and to DMV for their records and stuff. So currently, the device that we use is called an iPAC. It's similar to the one, if you go to Walmart and see the people doing the online grocery picks, you'll see them scanning the barcode. It looks just like that. And then we have a little printer that goes with it, and so they print out the citation. They can do citations on it. We can do tow sheets. If we tow a car, there's a form on there that we can tow. It takes pictures, so it does quite a bit. What we'd like to do is go to a cellphone. There's an app on your iPhone that does the same thing, and then that would enable the deputies to have a phone. As you can imagine, a lot of stuff is done over the phone. And then that would require new printers, because heaven forbid, the ones we have don't work with the phone, but that's just how that is. So that's something that we're looking at in the future to do, and it would give us a little more bang for our buck. The other advantage to an iPhone is the quality of pictures that you can take. So pictures for crime scenes, evidence, that kind of things are really good, as we all know. The other thing is probably the most important request that we have, and eventually this will happen, I just don't know when. So the jail was remodeled in 2007, and when it was remodeled, we got a new control board. And the control board looks like a gigantic computer screen, and it's a touchscreen, and it allows the control room deputy to open every door within the jail. Okay? So there's somebody, we call it the control room. It's secure. One deputy mans that all the time, talking to the other deputies who are out on the floor, and they open the doors and open the gates and let people in and out of the facility. That control board is, is on its last leg. We're limping it along, and we'll continue to do that, but eventually, it's going to crash, and the company that designed it and does the software, they're out of business. They're no longer in, in business. So when that happens, we'll go back to, everything will be done with a key. So we'll still be able to open doors and get in and out, but it will all be done with the key. So eventually, we're going to need a new control board. The downside is, is that they're, they're not cheap. So that's, that's, that's a need that we have coming forward in the future. As we're talking with Kathy and her team and the county manager, I was able to go through my budget and look at, and identified 11 different items, and we, and then what's turned into specifically 64 listed budget items. I was able to cut almost $20,000 in several areas of spending. A lot of this is budget items that I just inherited from previous administrations that because of technology and things we're doing have changed, and so we've kind of cleaned that up a little bit. We do that every year, but it seems like every year we look at it and like, well, why do we still have this? We're not even doing that anymore. So that's what we've, we've done this year, and that's, that's the amount. It doesn't seem like a lot, but it, I guess every little bit helps. So as you can look, that compares us from '08. Sorry, my eyes are giving me a hard time. In fact, I gotta go in to get eye surgery, but that's a different deal. I'm just getting old. So from '08 to 2024, you can see the differences from our, our calls for service. So we're, we're a little over 33,000, and then our, the arrests that we made, citations we issued, and so on and so forth. So you can see, we're, we're busy. We're not as, it's not, we didn't, last year wasn't the busiest year that we've had, but we're, we're still cranking right along. Our investigations or the cases that we assign to investigators or detectives went up, that's fairly significant. And I think some of that is, has to do with the technology I was talking about. So every case that we work almost has some connection with the digital forensics, and that's all done through investigations. So the guys are doing a great job. One of the benefits that separates us from other jurisdictions in the United States is that we are not so overwhelmed with crime, with calls for service, that our deputies are able to take a call, work the call, put the time in that they need, and then go 10-8 and, you know, make traffic enforcement stops, or look for other things, kind of proactive. Where, when you're in a big city, for example, when I worked in Albuquerque, when I logged on, there was calls pending, and when I went off a shift, there was calls left over that I'd never got to. And so that, that, we don't have that in Douglas County. So we're able to, to do a lot more, which is good, and that's the way it should be. So that's, that's the benefit of living here and having a relatively low crime rate, but we're able to do a good job when we need to and put the time in when we need to to solve that case. So if you are a victim of, of a crime, then we can put the time in to figuring out who it is. And it really doesn't matter to us what the crime is. If we got the time, we're gonna, we're gonna try to figure out who did it and, and catch them.
Question on that slide before. What is permits per year?
So the sheriff's office, we, the liquor licenses, all go through the sheriff's office. Concealed weapons permits all go through the sheriff's office. And then we do have, we do sign off on some outdoor festival permits, so we have an impact on that. All those monies go into the general fund. And then we also do connect, collect fees for civil services. So if you want a TPO served or an eviction notice served, we do that. There's a fee associated with that.
Thanks. And then on average daily jail population, it does seem to be trending up.
It is. There's probably a couple reasons for that. The judge makes a huge difference. So depending on who the judge is, they may have a less tolerant view on probation violations. So you may only get one chance or two chances to not stay out of trouble. And then I also think that the national crime rate is going up a little bit, okay? We're seeing, and that affects Douglas County too, but we're seeing a little more activity in commercial crimes, right? So your thefts at Home Depot, Walmart, those types of stores where they come in with a group of people and hit the store and then hit the road. All those offenders are, they don't live in Douglas County. They're not people that are living here. They're, they're coming from most of the time over around the Sacramento area or out of Reno. And so that, your retail crime has, has gone up a little bit, and then also your, your violent crime to a certain extent has increased a little bit.
Thank you.
A couple of observations. So as I, and I look at the, you know, I appreciate the, the information here. Actually, our, our population has not increased significantly since 2008, which is, which is, you know, so our public needs to understand that. But when, when I look at the, for instance, the calls for service, it's actually, in, when you look at the majority of it, it's below the average of that period of time from 2008 to 2023. So that's, that's an interesting number to take a look at, and yet your arrests look, you know, a little bit up, but not, not great, as well as your citations. So I appreciate this, this report. This is, this is good, and I recognize the same thing that Commissioner Hales did in regards to the average daily jail population. So, you know, that's, we're not releasing them quite as quickly as perhaps previously, which means that they're kept off the streets for a longer period of time, so.
Yes, theoretically. And I, and I think they are, absolutely. So one of the future projects that we're looking at is, the company that we get our tasers from and our body worn cameras is a company called Axon. and our body worn cameras is a company called Axon. And they are leading the public safety realm in technology within that, that body of work. Okay? The body worn cameras are a huge benefit for everyone. They're a huge benefit for the sheriff's office as far as evidence that's collected. Every interaction, whether good or bad, is, is taped. And so if, if there's an evidentiary value to that, which there almost always is, we, we collect that. It is cut down on the frivolous complaints that may have, that may come in. It holds our, our personnel, our deputies accountable. So if they do something wrong or make a mistake, it's right there in living color and we're able to address that. And it's, it's, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a huge benefit for everyone, for the public, for the prosecution, for the sheriff's office. But this company is really taking it to the next level. So one of the things that they are developing is, is AI for report writing. And so it takes the interaction on your body camera. It transcribes it and then it creates a report for you. So now the deputy can go in, download his body cam. It's already created a, a report. It's not done completely yet. We, we have to add some key information and, and stuff like that, but it gives us a start. And, and the theory is, is that it will cut down on the time that deputies are, are spent writing reports. An agency in Colorado, I, I want to say Colorado Springs, but I might be wrong, is using it. And they, they feel that it's, it's cut down a, a large part on, on the time that the officers are writing reports. The other thing that they're coming up with is a translator through the camera. So if we encounter someone that doesn't speak English, we'll, we're able to push a button on there. The deputy can speak into it. It'll translate for the person. The person speaks into it and then it translates for the deputy. So that, and it's, it doesn't matter what language we're speaking. I guess it has everything. So. It is. Yeah. It's just amazing.
Is it, it's not, is it written or is it just spoken?
No, it's just verbally. So you, when you're interviewing or interacting with the person, you're able to, it's able to get translated. And then, and the report side, it, it'll document it all there also. The other thing is drones. So they have a program that when, depending on the type of call, the call comes out, the deputy's dispatched and then a drone is launched, goes to the location and provides the responding deputy with the video footage of whatever they're going to. So you have a person in a park with a weapon or something like that. The drone is there, gets there before the deputy, and then it's given the deputy the information. They're able to see the suspect, if he does have a weapon, if he doesn't, what, what's going on before they get on scene. So it just would allow more information for the responding officer to have when he, before he gets there, which makes the officer safer, the public safer, and we're just more efficient. And then FUSIS is, combines all of this and is, is kind of a real time crime center. So if any of you have watched TV, Blue Bloods or any New York NYPD TV show here recently, at some point in the show, they'll go to their real crime, crime center. And NYPD is huge and they have, and I've been in it. It's a huge room, bigger than this building, and it's all just cameras and monitors. And there, every part of the city is, is recorded and, and they're able to track and, and do things like that. So that's what this would be on a much smaller scale, obviously. And so we're going to play a, a video created by Axon that kind of explains what I'm trying to explain, but they do a much better job. How do you get it up on the? So the people in the audience can see. Man, that is, there's more truth than that, you know? Yeah, exactly. Yeah, if my daughter was here, this would be already playing. Not that the undersheriff isn't good, but. Anybody know how to make the volume work? What's that?
Sound, sound.
Excuse me? No. Hmm. Yeah, let's see what happens.
So that gives you kind of an idea of the technology that's being developed. And Axon is a company we're already doing business with and, and they're very, they're good. They're leading, in my opinion, they, they, they're at the forefront of, of all this kind of stuff. And so that's something that we're always looking at, technology and getting better and, and keeping up with everybody else. So that's something that we're very interested in in the future. But as you can imagine, they're not giving it away. And that is all I have.
I have a question.
Commissioner, yeah, go ahead.
Actually, I don't have a question, but I've asked this all the time and you probably know where I'm going. But if you need more money, why can't you write more tickets? That's the question I get. Can you explain just briefly where the ticketing money goes?
So the, the money for any citations or any, you know, fines or bail or anything like that all goes either to the court or to the general fund. So, which is a good thing because, you know, it's not, the motivation shouldn't be to, to make money, right? On your traffic stops. It should be to correct behavior and, and slow people down and, and stuff like that. So, but the money goes to, the, the majority of the money from citations especially goes to the general fund. And then there are some court fees that are assessed with that too. And surprisingly, I've had this comment a lot. If you stop someone from California, our fees are much less. And they're almost, they're like, wow, that's it? That's all I gotta pay? So I don't, you know, I don't, I'm not saying we should raise the fee, but maybe for, if you're from out of state, we could bump it up and then they don't care. Can I say that?
Thank you. First of all, I want to, I want to say I, I had the opportunity to, two weeks ago, I think it was on a Wednesday, two Wednesdays ago, be in attendance at the Senate Governmental Affairs Committee meeting in, in Carson City where you gave a presentation to, to that committee. And I want to compliment you on, on that presentation. I thought it was very well done and I thought you did an excellent job of answering their questions. So that's number one. Number two, of course, the state legislature is asking the county and perhaps yourselves, language access plans. And so, you know, the, the body cams here that do the translation are an excellent tool and, and an extremely important tool in my mind to address that question on behalf of, of your officers. But three other things. Number one, there is a bill before the state legislature right now, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but regarding automated ticketing, right? I know that they, they have that function available in the state of California and everything seems to trickle over this mountain. But anyways, have you, do you have a stance on that? Do you have an idea or a concept or?
I, I do. I'm not for that for the simple reason that the register, the car that, that their person may be driving, they, he may not own that vehicle. So if, it's based on the, the vehicle registration is who, so it would be the owner of the, the registered owner of the vehicle who would receive the citation. And, you know, a, a lot of times you're working for somebody or you're, you know, maybe a kid or somebody that's, if you're, you know, you're not the owner of the vehicle. The other thing is that, I, I, I don't know, there's a little due process issue there, you know? And so I think that, that that's not always a good, a good thing. So I, I'm not really for that here. I, I think we're, we'll just have to keep, continue, or I, I'm willing to just continue to, to do enforcement kind of the old fashioned way and, and.
Well, I know that there was a lot of talk recently regarding the road diet plan in, in 50 and, and suggesting that we institute that kind of thing. And I said, you know, we as a county can't auto, automatically do that. Anyways, that's not our road anyways. So.
And, and the biggest factor to slow people down is the, is the design of the road. So if you change the environment of the, of the road, then you can increase or decrease speeds based on that. And that's expensive, obviously, because, you know, any kind of major road project costs a lot of money. But if you want to slow people down, and a good example, and they're kind of, people love them or hate them, are the roundabouts. The roundabouts slow people down. And so we still have accidents and there's, you know, people still screw it up and don't go when they're supposed to or do when they're not. And, but when the accidents do occur that are a much slower speed and we're, we're not having fatal accidents at those intersections. So that's kind of an example of a change in the road environment that does slow people down. Okay?
Another question I had, and you talked about this, and I'm not, boy, I could, I could, I, I'm not going to try to open this can of worms. But the question is, when you talk about going to cell phones for a ticketing process, we do have some gaps in service in the county. And so my concern would be what, what, you know, and especially at two of our major intersections, Waterloo and 395, and again at the 88, 395 interchange here. Is, how do, how would, how would you back up that situation if you, if you were relying on a cell phone that all of a sudden less service in those areas?
To write the ticket or to use it to write the ticket, you don't need to have cell service. So that, the cell service only applies when you are in a place to download the data that would be on it. But to actual write the ticket, you don't need the cell service. It's just, because it's an app loaded on there and it stores the data. So the violation, the, the driving info or whatever, and then you're able to print it without service. You just need the Bluetooth into the, to the, the printer. So you don't need, you don't have to have, because the iPACs that they have have no cellular service. And so they just, they're on their own.
Okay. And then lastly, last year, you wanted a new medical dispensing, monitoring or dispensing system in the jails. And, and will you approve that? So can you, can you enlighten us as how the program is working?
So we went from contracting our medical service, which is from the doctor and the nurses, the whole thing, away from the model that we had to a, a company called Recon Med. And they, their job or their company is specific to correctional institutions. So they, they do jails and prisons all over the state of Nevada. They're Nevada company. And what it has done is it's increased our medical coverage within the jail with the nursing staff. The, the doctor coming into the facility has increased. The biggest thing that it's done is deputies are no longer administering medication. So that's done. The nurses do that. So medication is, depending on the types of medication, obviously it can be anytime during the day, but typically your big ones are in the morning and then in the evening. And so, and nurse is, who has training and, and knows what they're doing as opposed to a deputy who we just put through a class and hope they count the pills out of the bottle, right? Like when I was doing it. They're, they're the actual one dispensing medication within the jail. I think that our level of care has increased. And because of that, we probably have less visits to the emergency room. So our only option without this new program was if someone says, hey, you know, I got a pain in my chest. Well, then we're going to the ER because we're not a doctor and I can't just look at it and go, ah, no, you don't. You're faking, you know? So we did a lot of that. Now we have the medical staff for at least 12 hours on and they can assess and evaluate and, and contact or be in contact with the doctor and, and evaluate. And if they do need to go to the ER, then that's, we still do that, obviously. But then if, if we don't, then, then we don't have to. So that's, that's cut down on those types of things. So I, it's been a huge success. I think it's well worth the money we're spending and it, and it's increased our quality of care within the facility.
I had the same question. So, I mean, do you track data and have the ER visits gone down? Or, yeah?
They have. I don't have the exact numbers, but I can get that for you. Yeah.
Thank you. That's great. I have some other questions.
Sure.
Yeah, it was my first question. So right now they're using iPads to write tickets, write citations?
Yeah, little iPACs. Yeah, was what we call them. So it's not an iPad and I, you know.
Oh, okay.
You could use an iPad with, if we went to the phones, because it would be the, it's just, it's just an app that loads on your phone or your iPad, but it will be a phone. So right now it's a standalone iPAC and that's all it's used for.
I see. So a phone has multiple functions, which is helpful to them, including a great camera. But I, I'm just trying to envision, like, when I, whenever I have to write something more than a sentence, I'm going to get on my computer, right? Because I'm like, do they dictate? Does it, does it transfer? Do, do they scan a license and it automatically puts that in?
It, it does have that. We're able to stand, uh, scan the barcode on the driver's license and also on the registration. So it auto fills that when you're choosing the violation. It's a dropdown menu and you can pick. It automatically loads the bail amount or the fine amount, that type of thing. It automatically loads. You just pick on which court you would be issuing the citation into and it, it, it does that. And then the biggest difference is these guys are all younger than we are. And so banging away on the phone, they've been doing that since, you know, almost birth, right? So they are really good at it. But yes, when I do it, I'm a, I'm a hunt and peck guy on my thing and it's taken a little longer than.
But really all their writing would be a few sentences?
Yes.
After, after all, that's auto.
It's, it's almost all just dropdown menus is the choices that were, were given. But once you scan the driver's license and the registration, all that information is all automatically dumped in or auto loaded.
And I'm, I'm wondering, you talked about body camera footage being good for everyone. Good for you, good for the person you might be detaining or arresting? And I'm wondering, what do you do with this footage?
So depending on the type of call, so it's all linked to an incident. So every, every call that we take, whether you're dispatched or the deputy self-initiated, is assigned a number. And that's what we refer, refer to as a case number. And then depending on what type of call it is, there can be a report that is mandatory after that, that is associated with that number. So, and I'll have to have the undersheriff jump in because this is really his world. But citations are a certain timeframe that we hold them. Okay? So all body cam is held for? So all body camera is held for 90 days at a minimum. If we do an enforcement action, a citation or arrest, we hold it for?
Longer.
So it's a retention schedule based on the crime. And then certain crimes, we hold indefinitely. indefinitely, depending on the type of, and that's all done through records, retention records law for the state, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, it just depends on what kind of case it is. If nothing, it's just a contact, a consensual thing, and no enforcement action is taken, we don't write a ticket, we don't take anybody to jail, then 90 days is all we have it for, and then it's dumped.
And how would a person access that?
So, you do it through a public records request. So, you go through, it's on the county's website, and there's a form to fill out. And we get those a lot. So, and it ranges from someone involved into it. Believe it or not, we get a lot of graduate students writing thesis reports on, you know, crime or whatever, and so, they're looking for information and stuffs. But, you know, attorneys request it, and other agencies may want it for different reasons or stuff. It's quite a bit.
Do you have staff adequate to?
We do. We have a guy. His name is William, but we call him Body Cam Bill. And all he does is our body cam stuff. So, he ensures that each camera footage or recording is assigned to the correct case number, so that we can find it again. And then, he does all the public records requests, and there's some redaction with some of that. So, especially, say, for example, you're on the beach at State Line, Fourth of July, and somebody wants a body cam, there's a lot of people that aren't involved in anything. So, we redact some of the images and stuff like that, kids, juveniles, things like that. So, there's a process, and he does all of that.
So, I'm looking at the supplemental requests, and just want to make sure I understand. The printers, self-explanatory, pretty much. The phones, likewise. The programming board?
The control board, yeah.
Yeah.
For the jail.
Yeah. When you said, this programming board controls the opening of all the doors, that was like, oh, wouldn't want it to, you know, have a malfunction and?
Yeah. It just becomes more, much more labor impacted if that breaks down, because now you got to go around with the key.
Okay. And your plan right now is to use it as long as you can?
We'll, well, depending on what happens after today, I would like to buy a new one. But if that's not, doesn't look like that's going to be possible this budget cycle, then we'll just do the best we can. We may hit a point, I guess my point is, is that it could work for another year, another two years. It could die tomorrow. We just don't know.
And how long is the replacement time?
I'm sure it would be within a week, you know, to get it in and stuff. Obviously, if we can plan for it and get a new one before it actually breaks, that's the best option, you know what I mean? If so.
Right.
And, but, yeah, the turnaround's fairly fast.
Okay. Then, oh, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. So, Kathy Lewis and I have been in conversations with the Sheriff's Office regarding potentially identifying some one-time funding from Fund Balance for the replacement of this particular item. And we will be bringing that back to the Board for a larger funding conversation with Fund Balance here shortly, so expect to see that item potentially on the allocation list. We, to the extent possible, when we're talking to the Board strategically about the use of one-times funds, this type of thing, where there's not an ongoing or reoccurring impact to the general fund, it makes a lot of sense to look at one-time funding for that.
That's good news.
It is. Very good. Thank you, Jen.
So, then, that just leaves the Axon contract as one of, your last supplemental request, and I appreciate that. It looks like you're taking, foregoing some of the motor vehicle money that would otherwise be in your budget.
So, I, yes. So, I'd be willing to cut my vehicle budget down and not get as many cars to replace the ones we need to get this program. But it would be, I would need more than what I'm able to cut in the vehicle budget. But I think it's important, you know, it's a lot of just kind of really neat stuff that would help us be a little, you know? And even if all we got was, so, that laundry list of things that we're interested in, I mean, all of that is really cool. The AI reporting part, I think is really good, and then the translation on the body cams. So, if all we were able to do is get those two, that's a huge improvement for us, a huge plus.
Yeah, I mean, when I did a ride-along, it was all very interesting until we got to the report writing. And then, that was like a very long time. I'm like, I just want to go to sleep here, and, yeah. It is very labor-intensive to do that, and if that could be automated, that would be huge, which makes me ask, if you experienced that efficiency, would you ultimately need maybe fewer deputies?
Well, I don't think, so you still need the bodies to respond to the calls and stuff. What it would do is allow us to be out, you know, 10:08, available, rather than, you know, be sitting behind a computer for two or three hours.
Yeah.
You know? And it doesn't take much. So, to give a good example, a typical DUI arrest, from the moment that you stop the car until you finish the report, is probably a minimum of about three hours. So, that, so you stop someone for DUI and take someone to jail, then that deputy is out of service for probably about three hours. Now, in an emergency, they can drop and, you know, respond and stuff. But if there's nothing going on, then that person is committed to finishing that report. And they need, and they are required to finish the report on any arrest before the end of their shift. So, at some point, they got to go in and start typing.
Right. Good. Well, it's very exciting. Does FUSIS stand for something?
I'm sure it does. I don't know. It's, yeah, it's an acronym for them. It's just, it's basically a real-time crime center.
It's an Axon coined term, FUSIS?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I just have to say.
I wanted to have one more comment.
Sorry, this is a little frivolous, but we have three minutes. My sister's dog died, and my other sister wrote her a poem using AI, and it was incredible. Anyway, as an aside, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Before you leave, I think it's important to recognize the tremendous support your department gets from our community. And you said it Saturday night, and for those of you who don't know what Saturday night was, and I've had the opportunity to visit, to be on all three. So, a function that rose out of a small gathering of about 30 people, I believe, at Wadets two years ago. The Douglas County Sheriff's Advisory Council put on a dinner two years ago at Wadets, had about 30 people there. I was able to attend that. But then, last year, it grew to a couple hundred people at CBIC Hall, and now you've outgrown that. So, my hat's off to the Advisory Council for that function, because they're the ones that, through a 501(c)(3), provide your department with a lot of bells and whistles that we can't necessarily supply through the general fund. And so, I thank the Advisory Council for putting on that function last Saturday night, over 300 people in attendance, and a tremendous amount of money raised through that process that will help your department. So, thank you, community. Thank you, community, for doing that. Great function. Thank you.
So, I have one more question. When you talk about the body cams and the storage, that's a lot of digital, possibly added that to it. What are you doing now for all this storage? Is it in the cloud, or do you have dedicated servers? And if this gets expanded, is that included in the budgeting process?
It is included, and all that goes to the cloud through Axon. So, we're not maintaining it in a server onsite, because it would be, that would be really huge. Yeah.
All right. I think that concludes, yes, Chief Operating Officer Kathy Lewis.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. I do have, if you would prefer, I have put their budget, individual budget, on a slide, if you would like to go through it, but it sounds like you have also done the research and asked those questions. But for the public, and for you guys to know too, is part of the digital copy, and then part of the binders at the beginning, is an outline of the schedule, and on that schedule, it has a page number of the individual budgets. So, I know we're right at lunch, I always hate talking right before lunch, but I do have those slides if you'd like to go through, but I also think you've done a great job with questions, whatever you prefer.
Other than the supplemental items, is the rest similar to this year?
Yes, and it does have those increases and decreases in there that the Sheriff alluded to when he talked in the budget detail.
Are we irresponsible if we don't look at the slide you prepared?
My personal opinion, you are not, but we always, if you're looking at it later and have questions, I'm sure I could ask the Sheriff and undersheriff to come back and answer those questions if I can't answer them.
Okay. I think we'll leave it at that, and thank you very much. And I want to take the opportunity, on behalf of our community, to acknowledge that you do an excellent job, and we are appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you are spot-on. The community support is tremendous. We are very, very lucky to live where we do. I'm very, very fortunate to be in the position that I am, and we work very hard to maintain and improve that relationship every day, but it's huge. We're very fortunate.
All right. We will adjourn until 1 o'clock. I'll call this meeting back to order. It is 1:05. We're a few minutes late getting going here, but I think we're ready to start. Before we jump in to our next presentation by community development, I wanted to pause and invite Kathy Lewis, our Chief Operating Officer, to introduce the good folks who have been doing the hard work behind this budget.
Thank you, and thank you for asking me to do that. I should have introduced them earlier. I would like to introduce the finance staff. This morning, well, I think online, we have Jenny Cartwright, our Finance Manager, and then this morning, we had our Senior Accountant Carolyn, but she's going to watch from the office this afternoon. And we have our other Senior Accountant Debbie Carter, and then Louis, our Accountant. Candy is watching from the office. And then, we have Kathy Kaiser, our Accounting Manager. But I would like to quickly go through, because it is always a team effort. Everybody that I didn't mention that didn't come, is we also have in finance Debbie Swicker, who does our grants, and Sarah, who... who does our grants, and Sarah, who does purchasing and helps out with accounts payable, Veronica Melissa, accounts payable, and then Andrea, who makes sure that we get paid every two weeks for that. And I do have just a couple more comments, if you don't mind, before we get started. I wanted to mention again, for the public and for the board, the detailed budget is in the binder and online, and one of the pages does give you the page of every budget department and where that detail is in the books, to be able to look it up, to cross-reference it. If anybody has any struggles, please let me know, we can walk through it. And I wanted to mention, when you were talking with the sheriff too, the supplementals, we have a tight budget, but I think the supplementals and discussing them also allows all of us to see what other collaboration with other department heads and with the budget and how we can possibly keep projects and things moving forward even in a tight budget here for that. And my last comment is that I know that budget gets long, and so I do have Candy over on my table.
You mean actual Candy? Yes. Thank you for that. All right. We welcome Tom Delair, Community Development Director. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, Chair Hales. I appreciate it, and thank you for listening through all these numbers. I'm sure it's very refreshing at the end of the day, having just to deal with my own department and the finance department. I want to appreciate, I want to just say thank you to all of them who have put a lot of the effort into this. I mean, I know Kathy says a team effort, and we went through and analyzed our budgets, but they did a brunt of what you see in the PowerPoint today, so I want to put a shout out to them for sure. Community development is our mission. Looks like we're going to need to update this for adding stormwater. Hopefully Courtney's got a mission statement and a department description as well, but the Community Development Department is here to enhance the quality of life for citizens of Douglas County by providing the highest quality and professional services for building, engineering, plumbing, or planning and code enforcement, also vacation home rentals, and then, of course, the admin of all that. The department description is really just operations of doing those permissions, and as you'll see, we have a lot of cogs in the wheel, I guess, as you go through this, and you'll hear what we're doing to try and make this easier for the public. We have a number of funds that we do administer. 511 is the administration division. Building Division is 512. 513, 14 is the planning and engineering, and then vacation home rentals is now split out. It's its own separate budget, which I really appreciate the finance department for doing that. It makes life a lot easier that we can just open up VHRs and look at that specific to VHRs rather than trying to divide it all out in code enforcement. And then code enforcement's at 517, and then we added the stormwater to this. We have an error on this one. It says 36 and 1/2 staff, and half of staff, it's not just a half a person, it's actually two people, that we have a quarter of a person. We'll get into that in another slide, but that 35 should be 36 FTEs in the department. And then we do share two individuals. Our GIS guy works for Public Works and for our Community Development Department. He is doing all the legwork to add the utilities into the GIS mapping, so it'll be easier to do all the digs requests in the future, which wasn't being done prior to that. And then also in engineering, we have Eric Brosma, and he's been here for 45 years, and I really regret the day he plans on retiring, but he's a quarter of his FTE is ours in our department as well. The building permits are performance measures. This is how we've always measured indicators in community development, it seems. It was just by permits issued, and you can tell between last year and this year, we're up 558 permits to 3,063 issued last year. So these are windows, window replacements, roof, water heaters, it's everything, single family homes, all the tenant improvements, commercial businesses. It's everything related to building. And then the next indicator is all of the, basically all of the whole department's permits or applications that we've reviewed, and it's at 3,500 for everybody. So what's interesting with this slide is that while building has increased substantially over time, we have really been decreasing in engineering and planning applications. So even though it's an increase for the year, the trending is lower. Fewer applications coming in planning and engineering than historically have been processed before, so it's a trend we're watching. Our goals in community development, we've got quite a list of things, 53 items, that we've been working on on the 2020 master plan. We finally managed to navigate the South Shore Area Plan update. That was one of the big ones that we identified and started working on a little over a year ago now, and it is going through its final steps here shortly with TRPA, and then that one is done. And we actually have a consultant and a contract for the North Douglas County specific plan, that first phase. We had that contract signed, and we're working on that. We'll have to do another, for this budget year, we have to do another contract with them to finish the plan, so we'll be getting that statement of qualifications out soon to get that bid on that second phase and then get that new plan done. Tahoe Douglas Area Plan was created, but it was basically a duplicate of the South Shore Area Plan, and we're working on getting that done and complete. And so it's going to probably take as long as the South Shore, if not more, because that plan isn't actually complete yet. So we got a lot of work ahead of us on that one, but we are working it. And Title 20, we've been working with some consultants out of the budget line items that we have. We've hired a consultant to help us navigate the zoning amendments in the code, and then once we get that, we were looking at that as basically the heart of the code. Everything else kind of goes around the zoning in our code, so we wanted to, once we get a draft of that out, then we can start changing all the other code sections to align with that one, basically that one topic. TDRs, some of you were at the meeting last week. We did have a TAC meeting with TDRs, and that's moving forward. Finally, we've got a recommendation that the consultants are working on and should be bringing back to the TAC here shortly, and then we'll get it to the planning commission and in front of you. And then probably do some public outreach again with the ranchers to make sure that they are on board with this as well. But this was an interesting conversation that we had with the TDRs. OPAL, this is the new, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Delair, can I ask a question about Goal 2?
Sure.
And this is kind of, maybe I should know the answer, I don't know. Will the update of Title 20 make it more efficient to get a permit?
Well, I think it'll make it more efficient for the people to recognize the code requirements, the processing. We'll try and, I think that question can be answered in this one, number three. With the new program you guys accepted, that we changed the program from Acela, the permitting program being regional, back to our own with the Oracle permitting solutions, and that's what the OPAL is, and we're hoping that that's going to be more efficient. It'll be really more efficient for the user, because we just had a meeting with fire this morning, and we'll be entrenching. So one application to the building department will get dispersed to the fire department and to all the entities that need to review it and approve it, and that's going to, that I'm hoping will help streamline the permitting process, because now you don't have to, now paying the fees is another conversation, but at least getting the permits in, everybody will be on the same page as far as the fire department goes, and the builders in the building department will be on the same page with where the applications are in the process. So that should be a huge, huge improvement, and that's for Tahoe Douglas Fire and for East Fork Fire as well.
Now, as I'm looking at this, so, and I'm looking at your budget, and it includes a payment to Acela for $159,000, final year of payment, so that's not breakable. Is that right? I mean, we are required to pay that?
Yeah. Yeah, we had an agreement, an MOU with Washoe County. We had to provide one fiscal year notice, and so we provided that notice already before the fiscal year ended, and so it'll end next fiscal year. And Acela has raised the rates times three, at least, if not more. For us, it was just over three times the rate we're currently paying this year.
And when do we anticipate Oracle coming online?
This year as well.
Heavy penalty to pay, but a necessary penalty, I suppose.
Right, yeah, yeah. And so we don't have two years of fiscal year notice, so that's good, right? So we saved some money there, but it was a requirement in the MOU in order to do that, that transition, so we had to give them notice. It did increase the other users of Acela quite a bit, so they are paying more because we are not participating in the program. So they weren't too happy about that, but they understand. And it sounds like they're going to sign for a five-year agreement and start looking for other solutions. Goal four was the, oh, what is this one? Large scanning project. So this has been going on for a while. They finally made it to the planning documents, which are extremely bulky, and a lot of large maps and scanning in color, and it turned into a whole big thing. They're now working on the assessors portion of it, where there's old assessors books that they're scanning. They can just take the book apart and scan those really quickly. So they're wrapping up. The last one's going to be planning files and engineering files, and we are bringing forward an extension to the contract on this to the end of the year, we're thinking, is how long it'll take now, but that has slowed the progress down, just having those large, large files. Before, a building permit was an eight and a half by 11, sometimes 11 by 17, but you can process it pretty quickly. But these large documents are taking a lot more time than they anticipated, so we will either expend the budget or we'll get the project finished, one or the other, by the end of the year. Our staffing, we just offered the position from charity, moving over here to the clerk's office, so we just offered that, so we are full again, or we will be full again in the department. Not a lot of turnover the last year, which I'm grateful for. We've got a great team, and that is extremely helpful in also making the permitting part efficient. And then, again, the TDR, we've already talked about that in the Title 20 updates, but we are still, we are making progress on it and moving those projects forward. Development agreements, there was four when we did this slide last week. You guys approved to rescind another development agreement up at cottages, up at Indian Hills, and so now there's three, which are all the Drayton ones. So if we can get that one redone, then that'll be on the list of successes for sure. We're going through the permitting program, like I said. Colleen is running that in our office, and she's doing a great job at keeping everybody on the loop with lots of meetings, lots of meetings with those guys, but we are keeping on top of that and moving forward as, I think, even faster than their schedule. So it's all coming down to translating the data over into the new system that's going to really slow the progress, but I think that we've got really good data that we're able to do that, so should move right along. Big thing for next year, and I think you'll be hearing about it come July this year, about 2024 code updates. So ICC and Northern Nevada is going to move forward with the 2024 code. To adopt the 2024 code, we'll see what happens with the legislature, if the fire department adopts it at the state fire marshal's office side, but other than that, I think all the building in the region, all the building departments in the region are going to go to this. So staff is working on updating Appendix B with this new language. There's quite a few changes that are taking place, and so we are really trying to track that and move that forward to you guys around, I think, July. And then we have a lot of trainings every, once a month, in the morning at 8:00 or 9:00. Actually, it's at 8 till 9:30. We have trainings at the front counter so that everybody's kind of on the same page with all of these topics, and it's been very successful in that program that Andrea has created, and I appreciate her efforts in making sure that the staff is well-informed with basically processes that have to happen after the permit is issued in our office. This is a little small, but this is the detail of the breakdown of the 36 and 1/2 FTEs, and you can see, you can see here, right here, the engineering technician is Eric Brosma, and GIS is John Cohen, and I really appreciate their efforts in the department, and it'd really be hard to keep up with the information that's needed in GIS without John, and then also any information that you want to find about any county item is Eric Brosma, and he's just amazing at finding and digging up that information. Revenue on these sides, we appear to be a little on the low side on the VHRs. You know, we've lost quite a few permits. We were upwards of 590, and I think currently we're sitting around 535 permits, so we may have to update this before the final budget, but these estimates, but I think we'll have those conversations with finance. I think building permits, we don't have a crystal ball. I don't know how many people are going to be asking for a new home permit, but it seems like we're on track this fiscal year to meet that budgeted amount, and it looks like it got bumped a little bit, another $40,000 there. I don't know if we're going to be able to get these extra fees out of the VHR just because of the, a number of permits that we have on the books today. It seems to be fewer, and I'm not sure what's going to happen with what happened in South Lake Tahoe with that Measure T being reverted, so we'll see where that goes.
Question here?
Yeah.
Sorry, not a question, just a point that I want to make. Jennifer Davison, county manager, for the record. I've been receiving a lot of questions regarding opportunities to save money in the general fund, and Tom's slide here really, for me, highlights this interesting dynamic that is the general fund. When we talk about revenue, the departments that generate the revenue, community development is the largest fee contributor to the general fund. And so the 30 positions, and I carved out stormwater because there is not a specific revenue, dedicated revenue source for stormwater funding yet. I'm foreshadowing, we'll have a conversation in the future about that. So if you carve out the six positions related to stormwater, there's 30 and 1/2 positions that are generating this revenue to the general fund. So I think that's important to highlight. Out of the 300-some-odd positions in the general fund, a huge chunk of those, around 200, are public safety-related. That leaves a balance of around 130 of those are community development-related that are generating those fees. So when we talk about cutting positions in the general fund, there's not a lot to cut that isn't tied to a fee or isn't tied to public safety. Now I'm at 70 positions that do all the other things. I'm just trying to give context for those who are following along at home, because we're getting a lot of questions about where we could potentially save and where we could carve out.
Thank you, Jen.
Can I ask a question on the VHR stuff? I thought those were restricted to certain uses, like we had, so these are just permit fees, these aren't the TOT tax, I assume?
Nope, just the permit fees that we bring in.
Okay, so the permit fees go into the general fund, and the general fund is paying for the enforcement?
Paying for, yeah, two sheriff's offices.
Two sheriff's offices.
DA and two code officers, and half of Ernie's salary.
Okay, thank you. So the TOT goes in restricted funds, so that's...
Right, yeah. And then engineering, you can see we budgeted $600,000 this fiscal year, and to date, we're about $450,000, so a little short there, but that has to do with the number of applications that we've received. We've received some big applications, but the fees there still are a little on the low side. And then the planning is the same, the same problem. With the planning is that our application numbers are down from prior years, so we'll see how that... So, so we'll see how that, we're watching those and see where that's at. The environmental health inspection fees, this is an interesting one. They lost their manager, Eppen Carson, at the health department. And so there's a lot of scrambling going on. But you can see here that there's also revenue that goes down too because the billing isn't as efficient as it was year last year. So, so we do pay as we go. And then they have, we did add a fee for them at the last time we looked at fees. And that has helped with their renewal costs associated. And that gets offsetted for the fee that we actually have to pay. We have to provide the service. Their estimate was around $300,000 that we needed to pay them to do the service. But it's being covered by the, by the, by the permit fees that they are collecting. And so that allocation in the billing is, is, this is actual, this is actual monies. And usually, it's the last quarter of the fiscal year is the big bill. But we'll see where that's at, at the end of this year. And then code enforcement revenue is, is, looks like we're going to be right on track. And then the ditch review applications are low just because we haven't had a whole lot of applications come forward for that. And I think, or we can go into the expenses side. So this is the admin. You can see here that 212 is the addition of Opel or the, we already had in the budget, the $159,000 that you mentioned.
Can we go back one slide, Tom? I, I saw something there that I wanted to, so the fines and forfeits. So we don't plan, well, we did plan for $10,000 in income, VHR fines and penalties. That number is substantially reduced from the previous years, right? I mean, we have been, that's a good thing, is what I'm saying. I'm trying to point out good things also, okay, here. Is that we're, we're not, we're not having as many violators, so to speak, right? So that's, that's good. So code enforcement is doing their job, and people are catching on to our system, so that's good.
Right, yeah, yeah. And the encroachment permit fees, I'm sorry, I didn't touch on this earlier. The $20,000 is what we budgeted, but we've only had, you know, 7,100 come through for, so nobody's cutting up our roads either, so that's, that's a good thing as well.
But, I'm sorry, what is it?
The very bottom one, the encroachment permit fees, right here, encroachment fees.
Yeah.
Yeah, is, is budgeted for 20, but we're only at seven. So we're going to be, we're probably going to be coming under, under that budgeted number as well this year. But nobody's cutting up our roads as many as they have been in the past, as much as they have been in the past. So that's, that's good. So the, the differences here, that software was the big one. That was the Opel integration that was added, but you guys approved that already at the budget. So it was included, or you already approved it as an item prior to this budget. So we did do that, and then, and we added, or included it in this presentation. And in addition to that, there was a $50,000 in credit bank fees, the very bottom line there. That $50,000 was actually, it should have been $11,000, and it was added to this number as well. So we moved it from bank fees into the software because of the way the contract was written. So, so not a whole lot of changes in our admin department. A lot of these, I think, are, this one was the, the cameras, the cell, the SIM card for the cameras that are needed for the, for attaching to the internet at the cell towers for the cameras at Painted Rock Mine to monitor that. That's what that 1320 was. And then in this one, and our planning, we moved $110,000. So our plan was is to budget $110,000 per year and then get the master plans done. We had $110,000 budgeted for the Tahoe Douglas area plan, and now that's budgeted this year. So next, next time, we're moving it into engineering to work on the transportation plan next year. And then, then we'll start working on the master plan the following year. And so that's what this, this change is. And it got moved into the engineering fund here. And then we reallocated some stuff to increase some travel and expenses that are needed for training in, in engineering. And then, and then you can see the adjustment for that amount in the professional services line item. The detailed budget is way easier to read than this one. And then, and in code enforcement, we made a bunch of modifications. So last year, we kind of split everything 50/50. And it turns out professional services was mainly for VHR, so that's under the VHR line. And then software down here is mainly code enforcement. So we moved that line item down to code enforcement. So we made some adjustments between these two funds to basically break even.
Maybe, maybe we need to go back up one slide. Okay, when I'm looking at this budget here, I'm looking at line item 101, 515, 510. Do we have that on here, up there? 515, 510, is that the next slide up or back?
515, 510?
510.
515, I see 520, 521.
Yeah, I, I, the budget I have in front of me, community development, VHR, code enforcement, line item 101, 515, 510, salaries and wages.
Oh, yeah, those are, and, and this is all services and supplies.
I need to, you know, there's a glaring thing there that I need to ask, and I hope you, I'm sure you have an answer. But for instance, the 2025 adopted budget was, for salaries and wages, was 211, 599. And the actual, for 318, 25, is 209, 287. But then the 26 tentative budget is $422,000. So that's, that's 100% increase on that line item. So I'm sorry, but...
I'm going to need help.
I'm sure it came from, it's coming from somewhere else, I would suppose, but...
You are exactly correct. I'll look and make sure the detail, that I have the detail correct. But the quick answer is, you're right. It, it came actually from the sheriff's office when we were trying to figure out how to, how to budget for the VHR program, knowing that when the VHR program was first implemented, it included two deputies and, and the cost in the DA's office. And so we've gone back and forth where those costs should be shown. They're all general fund dollars. Should they be shown in the sheriff's office in this budget? So we've gone back and forth. So that's why you see the discrepancies there.
Okay, so that, and that makes sense to me, that, you know, we need to put the cost allocation in the proper location, right? Okay, okay. I just, you know, I, I'm sitting here going, oops, I need to ask that question, sorry.
Thank you. It's going to make the reporting a lot easier. When you, when you pull out the revenue and the expenses for this fund, you'll see it together, and it should include the sheriff's office, even though that's a different fund and different department. And same with the district attorney, you know, having that, having that cost associated with the VHR program itself and the revenue on the same report is really helpful.
I was confident you had the answer, so I wouldn't have. I would have probably asked it offline otherwise.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy. And then code enforcement, we talked about, so supplemental requests. So in our contract that we brought to you with Opel, with the Oracle solutions, the, actually, in that long 70-some pages of, of, of information, travel to the site for onsite training wasn't included. So we took a look at our budget. We can pay for a lot of it in our current budget by not going to some of the, the trainings that we had planned for. But we were asking for an additional $3,000 to cover the costs of the training and travel. We have a number of departments, sheriff's office and the, the fire departments, both Tahoe and, and the Eastwork are, are going to need to be trained on the software once we get it implemented. And it's, it really is helpful. I've gone through one training so far where they've actually been onsite, and I can see the, the need for that. So, so we were asking for an additional $3,000 in the admin travel, and then we'll pay for their Opel staff to come and stay here in the valley for the, usually it's a two or three days in order to, to do that training onsite. And then, and then this housing assessment needs is a new plan. We were hoping that the housing study that UNR was doing was going to be sufficient, but we need to take what they've done and add to it. And, and so this has been added as a supplemental for next year as well.
What kind of housing plan are you referring to?
It's a, a needs assessment on this particular one. It's, you know, what, what are the needs in the, in the valley and, you know, more...
I got to ask you, why, why is that our decision-making? I mean, that seems like that would be up to the developers and the home buyers. And they're spending $50,000 to do something that we really don't have input in.
Yeah, you, yeah, there's a lot to that. But I think with what's coming down from the state, there's a lot of housing bill drafts that are coming forward that I think it's, the state's going to make it a requirement that we do something about it. And I don't know, you know, having a plan in place that actually shows where we're at today and how we get to the future, I just don't know how you're going to make it affordable here. The land is the cost, you're right.
Every single community has the same issues.
Yeah.
And no one has come up with an answer in two decades. And we're going to spend $50,000 that we could be using somewhere else for this type of purpose. Just seems like a waste, but, all right, thank you.
You know, I, I will, I will chime in on that because I agree with you, okay? It's an unfunded mandate, so you can put that in your blog, by the way, that we had read on that issue.
County manager has a comment to make.
So, well, all I was going to say is, the Tahoe Prosperity Group comes to us asking us for allocations on an annual basis also for affordable housing needs in the Tahoe Basin. And yet, I, I think I could do that study for less than a dollar because, you know, the affordability of housing in the Tahoe Basin is zero, you know? So I, I, once again, I don't know why we're spending money for that process. So, but that's, that's a personal attitude.
Madam Chair, if I may. Jennifer Davidson, county manager, for record. A housing needs assessment looks at more than just affordable housing. It looks at, it first would start with analyzing the existing units of housing and see whether or not the number of houses that we have matches the demographic need of our community. So I'll give you an example. Of course, we're taught, you, the commissioners already mentioned workforce housing, but we need to look at 55 in older community units, whether or not those align. And then it, will give us a blueprint for recommendations moving forward. I typed up a summary to staff to see, to, to talk about the specific data I was looking to obtain from it. We want to utilize best practices to determine whether or not the supply would be sufficient for a sustainable and thriving community. So you want to make sure that in terms of land use and zoning, you're, you're not just stuck with one type. You want to make sure that you have sufficient proportions of different types of land and zoning to allow for the future demographic needs of the community. And where that's specifically helpful for us is in our master planning receiving, the planning process, when we have conversations about what we would like to see happen with the receiving area. Instead of just waiting to respond to the types of development applications that would come to us, we can signal to developers through a master planning process what would be the most desirable types and what proportion of certain things we're looking for in the receiving area. And then we can have a policy conversation with the county commission on how we might incentivize those types of zoning in that area by streamlining, have, having pre-approval processes, looking at the TDR program. There's a lot that we can do to align our policy and our Title 20 regulations to ensure that the types of zoning that we think will work best for our community would be incentivized to come here instead of dictating, as you're alluding to.
Commissioner Tarkanian.
Well, I'm just, you know, I don't want to beat a dead, I'm not going to beat a dead horse because I want to get out of here at a reasonable time too. But it seems to me, we had these issues over the transfer, the, god darn it, the TDR program, where they had the ability to build all these homes here, even though we said it couldn't fall under, I mean, our roads couldn't handle it, and we get sued by it. And we're going to sit here and say, well, we can create this plan, and all of a sudden, we're going to try to encourage home builders to do something else, but they can do anything they want anyways under those guidelines.
I, I think I'd like to jump in. It seems to me like with this plan, we have the data we need to justify making policy and zoning decisions. And without this plan, if we make those decisions, we may or may not be able to defend them.
Zoning's already in place for most of these recent or, or close-to-be developments. So we're not, unless we're going to go in and change zonings from what it is currently.
Or we can add, or we can add a type of zoning, for sure.
Okay, it's okay.
It's relevant to receiving areas also.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, the receiving areas, what we were talking about, where they can get one home for every, I mean, 19 homes for whatever the acres. It was a ridiculous amount. And then we said it couldn't fall, we couldn't do it with the type of infrastructure and roads we had out there, and then we get sued by it. And then we have to come back and agree to something that, either way, it doesn't, and I'm sorry. I just, my question.
Good, good discussion, thank you.
I, so I, I am troubled by the state legislature constantly telling us we need to take a look at these things when I, I agree with Commissioner Tarkanian, is that we already still have somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 homes that are already zoned, already, already, you know, beyond coming forward. And, and, and we also have the growth management ordinance in place that regulates how many homes we can have on an annual basis in our community. And so while it's, while it's something, it seems like it's an unfunded mandate by the state to me that, you know, here we're trying to, trying to look at where, you know, what, what our needs for in our community, yet it, once again, it's market-driven. It's dependent upon what the developer wants to build and what they can reasonably price a home for. And they're not going to take a loss because the, the cost of infrastructure alone is, is exorbitant, exorbitant and going up by the day. So anyways, if this placates the state legislature and putting together $50,000 to tell them that what we pretty much already know, okay, so be it.
Okay, the capital requests, so on the CIP plan, you'll see a number of projects in there, a little more detail than what's here, this is just summarized. But a lot of these are in the works or we've been working on. And we just are continuing to work on, on them and move them forward. Jeremy is here in the audience if we have any questions specific. But we've got, like, the Buckeye Road Causeway, which is the, the drainage or the crossing at Martin Slough, trying to raise that road up. We did submit a grant for that, and I understand it's in some sort of review process. I don't know with the current administration at the federal level if that's, our funds are going to be released or not. So we're just kind of on standstill with the, with that particular one. I know there's a study being done as far as the Gardenville Water Company connection to the Gardenville Ranchos. And there may be a project coming forward where that can actually come to fruition. The Pine View Estates sewer extension is moving, moving forward. Their, their design, I think the improvement plans are finished and complete. Pine, we did a, I think, I think Jeremy had a, a study that is almost wrapping up that showed maybe a connection into Runestrough for this, for this extension out to the Pine View Estates so that, so that Runestrough could start or have the ability to be sewed instead of all using a septic system for their, for their sewer treatment. And then the Pine Nut Road Utility Extension, which is a water line out by the fairgrounds, extending that to the Tedson Anchor, Tedson Estates project. That's another project Jeremy's been working on. And the Ranchos Connector Multimodal Trail, this is something Scott Morgan and Jeremy have been working on. And it kind of morphed into the Drayton Boulevard project, which that's something we can move forward. We're still waiting on landowners in the Ranchos Connector Multimodal Trail for easements. And I don't know if, where that's at, we can ask Jeremy on that one. And then the Muller Lane Multimodal Trail out to Genoa, which we're close to getting all the right-of-way for. But we just got to have the construction funds to, to do it. So as funding becomes available, we're able to work and move these projects forward.
So just to clarify, this is kind of a wish list?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We wish we could get it done, but we are, we're working on it, little bites at a time.
Absolutely, got to have a good vision.
Yeah, yep. So was there any other questions? I know Courtney's got, Courtney's got more for stormwater. No other questions? No. Courtney, you're up.
Thanks, Courtney Walker, for the record. Let's see, I want to make this be an actual presentation at this here. Okay, cool. So as Tom stated, Stormwater Management Program moved over recently into the community development... Um, so as Tom stated, Stormwater Management Program moved over recently into the Community Development Department. Um, but we do like to kind of talk about the funding separately because it is a transfer from the general fund. Uh, we don't generate, um, any funds ourselves, um, so it's a little bit unique, um, and, and different than the way that community development operates. So our mission statement is managing flood risk and protecting water quality. Um, we maintain a lot of drainage infrastructure throughout the county. Uh, we do some small drainage improvement projects. Uh, we work on constructing capital improvement projects with the limited budget that we do have. And then we have in-house maintenance staff to maintain all of these assets. Um, and there, most of our assets are for water quality and flood control depending. At Lake Tahoe, it's a little more water quality and then down here in the valley, it's a little bit more focused on flood control. Uh, so some of our performance measures and workload indicators, um, we're always working to implement the Stormwater Master Plan that was adopted last, last spring, about a year ago. Um, we track, um, our inspection and maintenance program through a GIS program, um, tracking, maintain, maintenance of culverts, roadside ditches, detention basins. Uh, we install new culverts in certain areas, um, constructing additional capital improvement projects, and then also working to comply with our various permits that we have through the state and federal agencies, um, for floodplain management and also, um, water quality purposes. So our goals and accomplishments from this past year, uh, we have 1,408 inspections and maintenance of culverts, basins and storm drains, and those are all available on our, our GIS viewer, um, in, in order to kind of see where things are. We get calls often where people are saying, hey, this culvert that runs under this road under here needs maintenance, and we can look it up in our system to see, uh, when, when the last time it was inspected, what condition it was in. Um, and so we can, we can answer a lot of those questions without going in the field, although we do have staff in the field constantly. Um, almost 20,000 cubic yards of material was removed from culverts and channels. And, um, through the Lake Tahoe Total Maximum Daily Load, TMDL, Lake Clarity Program, we were awarded 166 credits, um, through our, um, inspection and maintenance of the assets up there, which also includes, um, road, road maintenance, um, sweeping and things like that, um, which we coordinate through the various general improvement districts up there. Uh, we only were required to, uh, get 135 credits, so we were able to exceed that this year, which was good. Um, future goals, we're looking, um, on continuing the discussion on direction for dedicated funding for the Stormwater Master Plan implementation. Uh, we are going to, we're working on implementing the Johnson Lane Pamela Place Flood Control Project. We were recently awarded a FEMA grant for that. Um, it's a $500,000 project. The FEMA grant covers 75% and the 125,000 from the county match, um, has already been budgeted in this year's budget. So we're moving forward with working on obtaining that parcel, designing and constructing a detention basin to help with flood control in that neighborhood. And then we're continuing to update our asset management system and we're working with Tom to try to figure out how we could, um, implement a work order system to better track the things that we're doing. Um, and every, all these goals and accomplishments tie back to the strategic plan in the managed stormwater goal. Uh, so our revenues, um, have stayed the same. We were established, um, with a funding source in, um, 2018 and it's been, uh, 1.105 million dollars each year. Um, we do have, um, obviously our expenditures do go up, uh, which makes it kind of a challenge when your revenues stay the same. Um, this is basically the services and supplies. Um, a lot of things, uh, one line item in particular that continues to increase is our vehicle maintenance shop. Um, and so that would be, um, maintenance of our excavator, our dump trucks. Our vector truck has a lot of complicated moving parts on it, so there's a lot of things that can go wrong with that. Um, and so that line item continues to be a challenge, um, to manage each year. It is definitely increasing and finance has some sort of calculation for how, how those charges, um, happen. Um, but it's basically an hourly rate if we need to take our equipment into the shop, which happens pretty frequently. Uh, we do have, um, our, let's see, small projects down here. Uh, that's 533-817 down here towards the bottom. Our small projects are any materials that the, that the crew needs in order to either install a new culvert, um, purchase any riprap, which is rock material for, uh, soil stabilization practices. Um, sometimes there might be an excavation job that they need, um, to, to rent an excavator that's larger than the one that we have in-house. And so every once in a while, we'll have to rent something that, for that. Um, and then, let's see, I think those are the main ones. There is a major repair and maintenance line item as well. Um, our services and supplies, we are a bit over, and so we're looking for different ways where we can, um, kind of reduce some of this, um, but we also want to keep moving forward with our projects. And so, um, it's been kind of an interesting challenge trying to deal with, um, your, your revenue staying the same, but as we know, the cost of everything is going up every year. And then the 246 Fund is the Flood Litigation Settlement Fund. This is funds that were, um, allocated as part of a settlement agreement. Um, and so we've expended most of our funds for our obligations. In that fund, there is still about $76,000 in that account, um, that the plaintiffs get to decide how to spend on regional projects. Um, and so we're still kind of working through that process. My, um, my personal, um, belief would be that we would put that into our Pamela Place Basin that we're going to, that we're working on because that grant, um, is probably not going to be sufficient enough to cover the whole entire cost of the project. The grant was applied for three years ago. So even acquiring the land is going to cost more than we originally anticipated. Uh, we don't have any supplemental requests. Uh, we do have an annual contract with the Tahoe Resource Conservation District. Um, we participate with all the jurisdictions around the lake, so Placer County, City of South Lake Tahoe, Eldorado County, Washoe County, um, Caltrans and NDOT. We all participate in stormwater monitoring program that we do through the Tahoe Resource Conservation District, and their costs are going up as well. So, um, our professional services line item is going to have to, uh, be increased to include that as well. Um, but the stormwater monitoring is something that all the jurisdictions have to do, and it's a lot more efficient for us to partner to do it together than try to do it individually. And then for our capital requests, uh, one of our, probably the next grant that we're going to be awarded through FEMA in the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is going to be for this Hot Springs Buckbrush Flood, Flood Control Project. The total project is 8.1 million dollars. The grant covers 90% of that. Um, and so the match component is 10%, which is about 800,000. This year we budgeted 271, and so for the next fiscal year, we're, we're, um, hoping to budget that amount again so that when we do get awarded the grant, at least we have two-thirds of the match requirement. Um, it's going to probably take multi, multi-years to implement the project.
I, I like the use of the word when, when we do get awarded the grant.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we're going to get it, um, because it's money that's allocated, uh, directly for Douglas County. Um, it's usually, um, this, this pot of money actually was for, um, they allocated it for, during COVID. And so it's directly for the state of Nevada and they went through a big, um, kind of vesting process of all the different applications that were received. And so I would say 90, 95% confident that we're going to get it.
So are they holding ARPA money? ARPA money, or what money is it?
It's FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Cool.
Ms., Ms. Walker, I, uh, we're in questions, that's good. Okay, uh, I do have some questions. Uh, okay, so when I look at your budget and it shows grant revenue, federal five, $5,300, uh, that's, that's almost, you know, I mean, that's peanuts, but, um, and then, uh, and then, huh? Well, I, I'm looking at line, uh, 245-000331. So, and then I go to, uh, and then I go to, uh, uh, 245-000392. It shows cost per unit, uh, $1,100,000 in a grant support. Um, I guess my question, and I don't know that you have the answer to this, maybe finance has this, this answer, is are we actually receiving these funds? Uh, do we actually get the dollars in? Are we getting a check from FEMA? Um, I, uh, understood some disturbing news and I, and I don't have any way of backing it up, but, um, when I was in, uh, DC representing the county, uh, the first of March, um, uh, it was indicated to us that, uh, uh, you know, FEMA had recently allocated, uh, or the, uh, federal government had recently allocated $40 million, uh, to go to, uh, Los Angeles for mitigating, mitigation of the, uh, the Palisades Fire. And yet, uh, FEMA is so far backlogged in, in their processes of actually generating funds that that 40 million doesn't go to Palisades. It actually goes to other projects that were approved in advance of them. So that's my concern is we, the county, has to put up the money and cause these things to happen in, with the anticipation of receiving 75 cents on the dollar, or in one case you said 90 cents on the dollar. But we're allocating the funds. We're actually, just because it's granted, are we actually physically getting the funds? Because otherwise, that is a hit on us immediately and, and maybe not getting the revenue for years. So I, I don't know how that's handled, and maybe, uh, Ms. Lewis has that answer.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Lewis, for the record, um, Chief Operating Officer. The five, for, I'll, I'll answer a couple of different parts in there. The $5,310 listed here was actual revenue for fiscal year '24, so we did receive that. It was actual revenue. Excuse me. Um, when you see budgets aligned items, um, in the tentative budget for '25, '26, we are anticipating them because we have an award. And we really have taken the approach that if it's an operating grant, for example, and then senior center, senior services, their operating grant for, for the food program, for the mills, for transportation, we have budgeted that because there are salaries attached to it. But we are closely watching, um, our, our federal revenue of when we submit those requests and when we get them back, we're closely monitoring that. If they're project-based, we will normally augment that in. Um, in Courtney's case, in her request, we've been in the County Construction Fund trying to put some money aside for a match for when that happens. But when that grant comes forward is when we'll augment that, but that money into it. So we'll actually only augment when we have an award. Um, hopefully that stands true, even after we have the award as we go forward in this new era. But in the budget, if you see in budget and numbers, they're usually operating grants that we have an award or we anticipate that we, confidence that we're going to get that.
The only reason I bring this up is, for instance, uh, there was a, uh, FEMA activity agreement in Topaz Ranch Estates for the flood mitigation, the road damages that occurred in, in the floods in '23. Okay, they, uh, have very limited funds. They went out and spent the money, okay, and, and are still waiting for the FEMA 75 cents on the dollar back, okay? So those are operating funds. They really don't have access to actually spend. And that's, that's my only concern is we don't take money and devote it to these things in, in the hopes of getting our 75 cents back or our 90 cents back, you know, whatever it is. So I, I, you know, that, I think we need to be careful on, on, you know, actually spending the dollars before we know that we're going to get the, the return. So, uh, and that's just cash flow, right? So.
All right, I, I also want to add for that 2023 flood event, we do have expenditures that we spent, um, during that flood event. Um, I, um, I wasn't here, but I know evaluating it, it was very careful that we spent what we felt like we needed to spend to correct the corrections we had. And we spent it actually out of our stabilization fund. So when FEMA does reimburse us, we have the request in, we will put it right back into that stabilization fund. We do have one project that FEMA just approved from that event, and it's the culverts up at China Spring. We won't start those until we know we have the award on that one.
I, I just had a quick question. Is it that FEMA is delayed in their payments or has there been times they just don't pay it after they promised to pay it? There's a big difference between the two.
At, at this point, delayed.
Okay, uh, County Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I really appreciate the job that Courtney has done in providing you with an overview of the Stormwater Department, but I wanted to also provide some additional context, uh, because I know stormwater is an important issue for the county commission, but also for members of our, our public who are impacted by stormwater issues in Douglas County. Uh, in 2018, when the, a previous board made the decision to, um, create the Stormwater Fund, um, they did so at the end of a budget process through a singular motion directing the county manager to quote, "Find a million dollars." Um, and that was a very interesting point in my career. I can completely understand why the county commission did that at that time. It was an important step forward for this community. Uh, but what they've done at that time was kick the can, uh, because there was no dedicated revenue source for that. What that meant was, is that the county deficit spent for a number of years until the general fund caught up enough to absorb this million-dollar transfer out. And as, uh, Ms. Walker has indicated, we are not able to divert additional general fund money to this fund to support this. Uh, we are barely covering the operations, ongoing operations, and no, are coming nowhere close to funding any kind of capital fund. Uh, I am foreshadowing a future conversation that we will be having with this county commission. We will do a full stormwater workshop for you, and we're planning it for the summer. Um, and we're going to have some important conversations about what we can do in terms of identifying a dedicated funding source for this. So thank you for that. I appreciate you allowing me to editorialize for a moment, and please don't make motions directing me to just find a million dollars, uh, because that's, that's not necessarily sound fiscal practice. Um, and I can tell you, we don't have a money tree in the backyard, which I can shake. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very good. Yes. Is there anything else from, uh, community development?
Tom Delair, nope, we're good. Thank you. That was enough.
That's why we love you, Tom.
And that was our, our fault for the extensive, uh, commentary. Yeah, well done. All right, we'll take a five-minute break.
Oh, thank you.
And, uh, let's see, right now it is 2:03, so we will, uh, start again at 2:10. Let's take our seats. We will reconvene. It is 1:00, 2:00, I mean, 2:12.
You're looking at last week's log.
We are happy to have with us Emergency Management Director, Manager, I don't know, what is it? Director of Emergency Management, Kara Easton, and Brent Finster with 911. Supervisor, maybe.
Manager.
Manager.
We'll be whoever you want us to be.
I got your names, right? So I got your names. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Kara Easton, Director of Emergency Management, for the record. We'll be going through four budgets in our department, so we'll be beginning with the Emergency Communications Division, which is a special budget. So our mission statement is, "First to respond, first on scene. Continually striving to provide and ensure professional service with equality, respect, and dignity. Our standard is excellent, and our model of success is teamwork. Our department function is to provide a Public Safety Emergency Communications Center, better known as a dispatch center, that processes emergency and non-emergency calls from the public and dispatches the appropriate law enforcement, fire, and/or emergency medical providers." So performance measures and workload indicators over the past year, we had just under 23,911 emergency telephone calls, 91,000 non-emergency calls, so we do get quite a few calls from the public who want to speak to the Records Division at DCSO, or the jail, or any number of other calls. And then outgoing was just under 30,000, so that's us making phone calls to other agencies, calling the public back, so on and so forth. Our calls for service, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office gets most of the calls for service, they had approximately 34,000. East Fork had approximately 7,000 calls for service, Tahoe-Douglas 2,500, Washoe Tribal Police Department was about 2,500, and then Alpine County, which is their sheriff's office and their fire department, was just under 3,600. So we had a 7% increase from 2023, so these are the 2024 numbers. So, like I said, DCSO has the majority of the calls for service, and a call for service means that we are actually sending a responder to the scene to actually go check whatever it is out.
Ms. Easton.
Yes.
I think our public would ask, why do we include Alpine County in this? Could you give us an explanation of that?
Sure. We have an MOU with them to be their dispatch center because they are so geographically isolated on the California side that we are the closest dispatch center and have the appropriate infrastructure to support that.
Okay, but they pay us for that service?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah. They're nice, but they still have to pay us. So our goals and accomplishments, last year, we continued to provide excellent public safety dispatch services. We continued efforts to stabilize our emergency communications center staffing with our goal of filling all of our positions. We almost got there. We have one person starting this coming Monday, so a week from today, and then we are in active recruitment for the last open position. So we have 17 of our 19 positions filled today, and then it'll be 18 of the 19 starting next week. Improve the training program, including initial new hire and continuing education with the goal of all personnel fully trained and qualified. So right now, we have stabilized our staffing, so we are working on the continuing education and professional development. And then review, revise if necessary, and then train staff on all department policies and procedures. Some of our policies and procedures are outdated. A lot of that has to do with old technology that we are no longer using, and then just changes in how our user agencies function, so we have to update our policy procedures based on that. So that is a huge lift that we are working on now. We started working on it this past fiscal year, and it will continue into the next. Our full-time equivalent positions, we have 19 positions that work for our Emergency Communications Center with Brent being the manager. We have three supervisors, three leads, and then 12 dispatch staff. Our revenue summary, we get revenue from the ad valorem tax as well as fees from our user agencies. So those five agencies that were a couple slides ago, so DCSO, the two fire protection districts, the tribal police, and Alpine County, all pay user fees to our dispatch center. You look like you have a question.
Yes, I could have waited until you got to that slide, but I do ask, what, so we had a, but under 911 surcharge, can you, what's happening in '26 in that regard, I guess?
911 surcharge?
That's...
We'll go over that on the next budget, which is the 256 budget. But I promise, we have an answer for you. So this is how we get our revenue for the Emergency Communications Center. Our expenditures, we have a handful of increases that we requested, mostly for training and travel, so now that we've stabilized our staff, we'd like to be able to send them to conferences and other education opportunities. There are multiple conferences that relate to emergency communications, and previously, because of staffing, we were only able to send maybe one or two people a year, and now we're hoping to expand that to get some more growth in our center in regard to training and just professional development. And some of those classes include mental health training, because as you know, dispatchers are just on the other end of the phone, they oftentimes don't get closure, or they're helping folks on their worst day. So it's helping the people who are calling in, as well as our staff in the center, to be able to deal with that kind of stress. And that's about it on our expenditures going up. Everything else is pretty much the same. We have one capital request in 255, the Emergency Communications Budget. We have an existing mobile communications center vehicle that is from 2004, which is quite old. It has two consoles in it. Previously, it has been deployed to incidents to help with dispatching that are specific to like a New Year's Eve-type situation or a large-scale wildfire. We're also able to use the bus, as we call it, if we have to evacuate the Emergency Communications Center and need to obviously still provide those services. So this would provide that service. These things are very expensive to replace. We are asking for $1 million out of our fund balance reserves, which we have currently. So this is part of our strategic, part of the strategic plan, serving our community with quality county services. So just a caveat to this, the Sheriff's Office could potentially also use it on a large-scale incident if necessary. So it does serve more than just our department. And that's it on that budget.
Just have one question that I ask the other two departments. I know Jennifer's asked, Ms. Davidson has asked, if to try to cut certain areas where we can, did you, were you able to cut out any money from your budget going through that analysis? And if you haven't, it's fine, I'm just comparing to some of the other departments.
Because this one's not general fund, we felt that we were able to make certain increases to make the center more hearty, so no, to answer your question. No, you're fine. All right. We'll jump into the surcharge now. Did you have a question on the other one? So this is Fund 256, which is also a special fund. This is our 911 surcharge fund. So the mission statement of this particular budget is to enhance and improve the telephone system for reporting emergencies in Douglas County and to oversee 911 surcharge funds. This fund is in accordance with Douglas County Ordinance 2018-1517, Nevada State Statute, and FCC regulations to receive a surcharge from landline and wireless phones, and to provide funding for 911 and other appropriate expenditures related to emergency dispatch. So performance measures and workload indicators, this is based typically on phone calls only because it's that system that gets the emergency information going. I'm not going to read this whole thing to you. We did have a slight decrease in phone calls, but 151,000 is still quite a few for us to handle here in small Douglas County. So goals and accomplishments for this particular fund, we have to hold four quarterly meetings per NRS, which we were able to do. We provide an annual report to the County Manager and the Board, which we did, and ensure that all expenditures are allowed by ordinance, NRS, and FCC, which all of our expenditures were. And then this previous year, or I guess this current year, we updated our five-year master plan, which was approved by the Board in November. So our goals for fiscal year '25 and '26 are the same, and then to follow the five-year master plan since we just updated it. We also have this 911 surcharge advisory committee, which is who meets quarterly, and they provide us direction on how to spend those funds. So our revenue summary, this comes from the 911 surcharge, which as you know, we are seeking an increase currently to a dollar for each line, and then $10 for trunk lines, which would increase our revenue by approximately 180-ish thousand per year. I've already talked to Finance, we don't know why there's a decrease in revenue for next year, so we're looking into that because that doesn't necessarily make sense based on the growth that we are experiencing. One of our supplemental requests will also talk about that, so we'll get to that in just a moment. So our expenditures, they're pretty much status quo. Some of the biggest projects we've been working on is updating our consoles in our dispatch center, which is what houses all of the technology necessary to provide dispatching services, which we have paid for or are currently paying for, so there are no increases after that until we meet with our surcharge committee to see what projects to work on coming up. So Commissioner Charkanian, we actually reduced some of our expenditures for this coming year. So one of our supplemental requests is to audit our surcharge to ensure we are actually collecting all the money due to us. So one of the things we saw is our revenue was going down, so the point of auditing is to ensure that we are actually collecting everything we're supposed to be getting. One of the interesting things is for cell phone users, the surcharge fee comes to us if the bill for the cell phone is in our county. So if you're like me and you have a 702 number, Douglas County may still get the surcharge fee if my bill address is in Douglas County. If it's not, then it goes to wherever that address is. So that's the point of this supplemental request. And then we have two capital requests. The first is fire station alerting. This is an ongoing project. Part of this has already been approved by the 911 surcharge committee. We are just asking for more money because of unforeseen costs, basically. We thought it was one price, and then as you know, things go up every year, and so there were an extra cost that we did not expect. So the total for the county would be approximately $125,000. On this, I will say, this does require coordination with the two fire districts, and they also have a fiscal impact to this. So we are not providing the money for the entire project, just our portion where the tone from dispatch gets to the fire station, so that's this capital request. And then the next one is Next Generation 911. That is basically enhanced technology to provide better and quicker and more accurate services for our public and our responders when calls come through. Brent can talk to more about this if you have questions, because he's the technical guy, but basically it is an ongoing charge, so it's approximately 45,000 to 65,000 annually for service through a company that provides us this equipment to be able to enhance our users' experience, I guess. I don't want to call it enhance an experience through dispatch, that sounds terrible, but provide them better and quicker service and more redundant service. So this also allows us to have better interoperability with regional dispatch centers, or dispatch centers in the region. So those are our two capital requests in this fund. Any questions about this?
So one, I don't know if you know, but I was a dispatcher for a very short time.
Do you want to come back? We have one more position.
No, thank you. I left because I'm not that type of person. It takes a very specific person to run... person to run a dispatch and then take on that responsibility. But I guess my question is, you're talking about response times, looking for more money and that, but I understood that there's an issue with dispatching the fire department now, and that's caused delays in that some of the response times are 10 to 13 minutes in certain areas. And so I'm wondering if part of this that you're looking for is going to alleviate that, or if some of that is a policy issue with the additional questions and stuff that were being asked before fires dispatched. So is, because you had the line item in the first one about updating your processes and stuff. So is, I guess I just want some kind of assurance that this is going to get remediated and that our fires or part of department is going to be able to get released quicker.
I'm not quite sure where you're getting 10 to 13 extra minutes, so I'd love to chat with you offline about those specifics. But the fire station alerting will decrease the time, sorry, I was going to say increase, wrong way. It will decrease those times. Basically, as the call is input, it will immediately send that tone to the fire station. So they're getting alerted and they can start getting ready as more call information is put out to them. So that is one of the things that will alleviate the, in theory, extended time. Again, I want to talk to you about that because I'm not quite sure where that's coming from. And then the next gen 911, it's just more technology to help with that, get better locations from callers and things of that nature. So yes. And then in regard to the policies and procedures, we've actually worked with Tahoe-Douglas and East Fork just recently on how we can make those call times much quicker. So we are in the process of ensuring that this community is getting better service and so.
I think we have no more questions.
It only gets more exciting. So next is telecommunications, or better known as our radio division. This is a general fund budget. So our mission statement is to ensure the integrity and continued functionality of the Douglas County Public Safety Radio System. Our department maintains the radio sites and infrastructure, services user agency radios, provides a maintenance plan for radio equipment, and responds to communications emergencies throughout the county. So performance measures and workload indicators, we have two full-time employees with oversight from Brent, our emergency communications manager. They lead the multi-year public safety radio upgrade project, support four primary user agencies with radio maintenance and troubleshooting. So our four main user agencies are the sheriff's office, Washoe Tribal Police, East Fork, and Tahoe-Douglas Fire Districts, and then other departments that use our radios and our systems. So like JPO, alternative sentencing, animal services, smaller agencies. So we manage their handheld and mobile radios. So handheld is the one you hold in your hand, the mobile is what's in your vehicle, and then base radio stations, which are at all of our fire stations. This team also maintains our 16 primary radio sites throughout the county, along with various smaller sites that contain communication port equipment. So this includes repeaters, antennas, UHF links, voting receivers, basically how we're able to communicate throughout the county for public safety incidents. So goals and accomplishments. Last year, our accomplishments, we obtained two grants to help with FCC license coordination as well as radio preventative maintenance. For the license coordination, we got around $6,400, and for radio preventative maintenance, we got around $48,000. And both of those grants were no match, so that was no cost to the county. We also completed our Station 12 tower upgrade. So we'll talk about the radio system upgrade project at the end of this presentation, but this was an opportunity for us to jump on with NDOT to improve our coverage in North County. So it created a taller tower, which is not related to cell phone towers, and we were able to put new equipment on there. And so it increased coverage within the county and the valley and also up Spooner Summit, which is a problem for us. And then we were also able to complete preventative maintenance on the entire Tahoe-Douglas fire radio inventory. So one of our goals is to now work on the sheriff's office radio inventory.
Yes, just Spooner Summit?
Up US 50 to Lake Tahoe.
Yes, I got that.
Okay.
But that's not Douglas.
We run a lot of mutual aid calls with Tahoe-Douglas, so we have to go up that way, and it requires radio communications as well as responding with Carson City Fire. So the Clear Creek area, there's a lot of weird jurisdictional lines in there, so there's a lot of mutual aid that goes on in that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So our goals for the upcoming year is to continue to upgrade and make improvements on our radio system, continue preventative maintenance for our user agencies. As you know, things break all the time, so we are constantly doing that maintenance. Continue seeking professional development opportunities for our two radio technicians, and then of course, continue to seek funding opportunities. So we have two full-time positions under the telecommunications division, our two telecommunications and radio techs, and then Brent oversees them both. We do not have revenue in this. We do charge radio user fees to our four agencies, but that goes into a separate fund that we are able to use specifically for the radio upgrade, not for general services and supplies. So I would like to say the increase that we built into the 190 budget actually came out of the 281 emergency operations budget, which led to a net zero increase in the general fund. So some of the main things we looked for here was more professional development opportunities for our two radio techs, as well as increasing our professional services and small equipment lines, just so we could continue with our contractors to help with preventative maintenance, as well as being able to buy day-to-day small pieces and parts that are necessary. So our capital request, this is an ongoing request that we've moved forward from last year as well, is our radio system upgrade, which you're all familiar with. The projected total cost is 8.5 million. We had approximately 1.9 million or 2 million. I'm not the finance person, so I can't do that math quickly. So we have spent that money. We purchased some new repeaters and did some preventative maintenance stuff with that. And then we are taking $1 million from Fund 255, which is our dispatch fund. But because the radio system is directly related to dispatching, we felt that it was applicable. So we are asking to move that into the 190 fund, or rather, our radio fund, sorry, to be able to continue our work on the upgrade. We are hoping to use the surcharge increase, which was at approximately 183,000. And then, of course, we're always looking for grants and other partnering opportunities, such as the NDOT partnering that we did at Station 12. We paid for half of the radio tower, and they basically did the rest of the work and said we could use the tower. So we thought, hey, we only have to pay for half of this? Let's do it. So we're continually looking for those opportunities. And then-
Just letting you know, since I was Debbie Downer before, when we went to DC last, or beginning of the month, we brought this up to all three of our representatives, and all three of them agreed to look for potential paths for funding under their jurisdictions. So it's probably time to send them a letter and follow up on that, just so you know that they did agree to look into potential funding sources to help us with that.
Awesome. So thank you, first of all. Yes. We'll let you do that negotiating. So just last week, I believe it was, we did put in for a federal appropriation request for 2 million, because typically they don't award more than that. So we did put in application for that and sent letters of support to our representatives for that. So thank you. So cross your fingers, send your letters, hey, hey. So some more information on the radio project, some of the accomplishments. We ordered 14 repeaters to phase out our end-of-life existing repeaters. The Station 12 tower, which we've talked about, we got test equipment for our technicians, which is vital to being able to make sure our stuff works. So if we get a report of an outage, we can take that equipment out and on the spot determine what's wrong. We've hired two contractors to help with preventative maintenance and other system-related work. We've done our frequency coordination to ensure compliance with the FCC. You don't just get a radio frequency, you have to follow a lot of federal rules with that. We were able to purchase miscellaneous pieces and parts for upgrade, as well as daily maintenance tasks. And then we were able to send our technicians to some training to ensure that they were able to keep up with the work, as well as forward think as technology changes. So our goals for the next year are to purchase the remaining repeaters and associated pieces, parts to put up at our existing sites, obtain land use agreements for new sites to improve coverage. As you know, mountaintops are not easy to access, so we're trying to find the best places to put stuff so we can actually access it in wintertime. The fire station alerting interface, so that's part of the overall radio project, as well as the 256 project. And then, of course, continue seeking funding opportunities. And that's it for radio.
I don't see any questions, so thank you very much.
I would indicate that I appreciate you looking for methods of bringing our tax dollars back to our county for our use. So, thank you.
Last but not least, the emergency operations budget. This is also a general fund budget. So our mission statement is to prepare for, respond to, recover from, and mitigate potential hazards in Douglas County. Our department description, provide training for county employees in the community to be prepared for emergencies, and provide support for responders and coordinate resources and information during incidents affecting Douglas County. So our performance measures and workload indicators, we are in the process of rewriting our emergency operation plan. We're also rewriting our continuity of operations plan for all of our county departments. We're participating in Lake Tahoe regional working groups and identifying funding for regional evacuation studies. Right now, there are many individual studies being done, so we're trying to look at this regionally to make sure we look at the basin as a whole, rather than in pieces, parts, to really understand the full impact. Identifying regional planning, training, and exercise opportunities. If you've never heard it before, we're part of the Quad Counties, so we work quite frequently with Lyons Story and Carson on how we can strengthen our regional approach, because we're all small but mighty, so we need each other when the bad thing happens. Identifying memorandums of understanding to put in place prior to an emergency, we're really targeting the private sector right now and how they can help during emergencies and after emergencies. Creating a county-wide emergency management training and exercise plan. We have a training plan currently, and now we're looking at how we can exercise once we've gotten people that training. Writing exercises, identifying grant opportunities if we still have federal funding, and then responding to unforeseen events. So goals and accomplishments, this past year's accomplishments, we adopted the 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is good for five years. We participated in multiple public outreach events with our sheriff's office and our fire district, so here in the valley as well as at the lake. Our CERT, or Community Emergency Response Team, our membership is continually growing. We're finding more volunteer opportunities for those folks, and we're offering more training for our volunteers, as well as trying to get out into the community. We completed a sandbag site MOU with East Fork Fire out at Station 9, which is Fish Springs, which is pretty isolated. So that's the best place to put that sandbag site, and so I think that will really serve that part of the community. So that was a good collaborative effort with us in East Fork. And then we responded to the Spring Valley Fire back in July of 2024, which thankfully did not end up being a very bad fire, which it easily could have been. Our goals for next year are to complete our continuity of operations plans for the county, continue to work on Lake Tahoe regional evacuation planning efforts, continue to identify funding and grant opportunities, provide preparedness, education, and training to the public, and then write an exercise plan. In emergency management, we have three full-time folks, myself, Tanner in the back, and then our accounting specialist, who helps dispatch as well as emergency management. Our expenditure summary, so like I said in the last presentation, we took some of our budget and moved it over to the radio division because we felt like they needed money to keep operating. And as you know, the radio system is the backbone of how our responders operate, and so we felt that was more important and shaved some money off of our emergency operations budget. We continually look for grant funding under emergency management, so if we need to, we can supplement with grant funds, if they're still available, that is. And that's it. We don't have any supplementals or capital in emergency management. Go ahead.
And I just wanted to notice here that you got $51,028.67 in grant match for salaries.
Yes, so that's the emergency management performance grant, and we use that to offset salary.
So we appreciate you doing that, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, go get some more.
I'm trying. It's very competitive out there these days.
Well, thank you. Good work. Any other questions for Kara, Ms. Easton? All right, good job.
Awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Thanks for being here. All right, here we have IT on the spot. Welcome, Mr. Rujah. Short pause, please. I would like to take official notice on the record that it is Mr. Rujah's birthday.
Yes.
We won't sing, but we'll clap. Thank you for spending your birthday with us.
Sorry, staff have been asking me how old I am today, all day, so try to avoid that question.
Well, you could announce it for the public record, but no, or not.
You don't look older than 29. You're good.
All right, so today I'm here to talk about tech services and answer any questions that you may have. The mission statement here, empowering the county through technology and delivering excellent service, maintaining fiscal responsibility, building strong partnerships, and driving innovation and ensuring data security. Department description, basically, we provide the technology, infrastructure, and support necessary for the county's mission-critical services. We deliver reliable, secure, and innovative technology solutions, enabling departments to focus on their core missions and deliver vital services to the community. Performance measures and workload indicators, we use a ticketing system, ticketing and analytics. We had a total of 6,200 tickets, and that is divided up into Help Desk and GIS. The Help Desk support also extends to a after-hours 24/7 support as well. So that's a tier one, tier two, and then after-hours service as well. Goals and accomplishments, improved public safety systems and facilitated upgrade of the Spelman safety software, executed a network redesign for China Spring, streamlined user onboarding, implemented automations to do PC onboarding, significantly reducing setup time, optimized system management, successfully transitioned to a new remote monitoring management tool, improving system oversight and proactive maintenance capabilities, merging multiple software needs into one, strengthened cybersecurity posture, deployed an advanced email filtering solution to protect against evolving cyber threats and mitigating potential security risks. GIS, so geographic information system also falls under tech services. The goals and accomplishments this year was to work with the clerk's office to address verification of voters and data implementation of new state voter registration systems, set up and implement a branch versioning enterprise database workflow to process data collection and data editing for Douglas County utilities and public work staff. We did 153 public and special requests, noticings for community development. We have done 351 parcels and created or modified parcels for the assessor's office. Full-time equivalent positions, we have a total of 15 FTEs, three in geographic information systems, and 12 in IT. Expenditure summary, we added $90,000 to our software budget. That is a budget reallocation from community development. They had some software under their budget, so this is a reallocation. So take it out of community development, put it into IT to try to consolidate all of the- all of those charges into a central location. Expenditure for geographic information systems, we also had a $90,000 annual fee for ROK that runs our GIS software in the cloud. So, it's hosted in the cloud. We have migrated a lot of our things to the cloud when it comes to GIS. Many of the critical systems that we have at the county rely on the service, land planning, EMS, public safety, 911. So, that is the infrastructure in the cloud. And we mistakenly removed this expenditure from FY 2425 in the budget, and now, we're just adding it back in. So, that's the expenditure there. And we also had, I'm sorry, this is the transfer from community services, so it's $70,000 for software that was just transferred from comm dev to tech services. Capital requests, we have an $85,000 annual switch replacement budget. So, we're asking that that is continued in our budget. And that is it. Any questions, or?
I'll go. So, what exactly is a manual switch replacement, that last line item?
Switch replacement, so basically, our, if you think about technology bandwidth, so, you know, we get internet services to 20 departments, right, 20 office buildings. Basically, our backbone of the county's internet runs off of some, you know, high-level switches, switching gear. So, annually, we try to replace the switches in a manner where we are being fiscally responsible. For instance, we may get a new switch and then, kind of migrate the older ones to a, you know, location that doesn't have that many employees, right? So, 85,000 is the annual budget. If I had to ballpark it to replace all of the switches for the whole county, it's probably over a million dollars. So, we're kind of aggregating and doing it kind of in a smaller buckets, if you will.
Okay, thanks. And then, my other question has to do with cloud migration. I spoke about it a little bit before. With, so from my understanding, is the servers, the technology, the older your servers are, the more subject they are to cyber attack, because they've been online longer, and there's more time for them to create new. So, at that time that those servers age out, you're going, the trend is to switch to a cloud migration? Is that, is that something you guys have planned for? Have you recognized, like, the life of our current servers?
Yeah. So, that's, that one's a little bit of a loaded question, because we do maintain central servers, but we also have a lot of cloud services and cloud-managed services as well. So, what you're speaking to and alluding to is the county spends a pretty significant amount of dollars to be able to safeguard the perimeter, as well as the infrastructure, as well as the endpoints at the county, right? So, laptops, right, desktops, those types of things. So, we do put a significant investment into cybersecurity. I think, generally speaking, I do want to start a process where we're migrating to a hybrid solution. So, for instance, on-premise, you know, and then, having certain servers that are in the cloud in a hybrid environment, so that eventually, the goal would be to kind of migrate to the cloud, because it's, you know, easier to manage, right? Those types of things, it's a little bit harder to take down, right? And I think one of the biggest considerations is cost, right? We have 70 servers that we maintain centrally, and then, we probably have another 30 on-premise servers. So, that's 100 servers. If we were to immediately pivot and go to the cloud, that would be a significant amount of dollars coming out of the county on a monthly basis. So, I think, generally speaking, I am trying to collaborate with all the departments, so that when they do have solutions that they want to purchase, to try to push them more towards cloud-based or latest technology solutions to make that transition easier in the future.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was looking for, is that we're trying to plan for the stuff in the future without just having it, you know, rear its head, and we have to react. So, as long as we know it's coming, that's what we're looking for.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Go, go have a birthday.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Oh, since we have a minute, since you were so quick, would you introduce us to your staff members who are here?
Oh, sure. Mike Avila, he's the project manager, and Matt Richardson, he's our senior GIS analyst.
Thank you for your work. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis, back to you.
Thank you. I do not, my closing comments are, I think, first day down, and I think it went well with departments. I always, as long as I've been here, I think I still learn stuff every time I listen to these presentations. So, thank you to the departments that presented today. A lot of great questions, but that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to say, every time we present, I sure learn a lot. So, thank you.
Yeah. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? All right. Public comment is closed on that agenda item, and we will go to closing public comment. Is there any closing public comment over any matter that we have jurisdiction or control over? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.